What are the? Okay. I'd like to call to order the Education Committee of the whole meet for the Board of Directors of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, which is February ninth, two thousand and twenty-three. An executive session was held to discuss confidential and legal matters, including cybersecurity and outstanding grievance with the Teachers Association, safety protocols and informational updates, United Way contract approvals on building construction projects, and consultations with charter school special counsel regarding the status of various charter applications and interactions. I'll tell you, the board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments is at the beginning of the meeting and is limited to agenda items only. If you so choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to Deputy Superintendent Jen Ramos. Comment cards are located on the podium near the door. Once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. At this time, I'm going to ask if our acting superintendent, Dr. Burks, has any remarks?
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Conover. Good evening, School Board of Directors, Administrators, my team, and of course, to our great public and our students. Tonight's education program of the Committee of the Whole will contain three items for consideration for action and one presentation. The first item is an update to the Allentown School District two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three Health and Safety Plan. As required, the team must review the plan and submit for approval updates every six months. Tonight, the update will be reviewed with you. The second item is approval of the two thousand and twenty-three, twenty-four Allentown School District Instructional Calendar. The proposed calendar sets the structure for our learning plans for the next school year. The final item is approval of an external evaluator to assess our Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Grant Project for Cohort Eleven. An external evaluator is required and paid for as part of the grant. The administrative team will conclude their portion of tonight's agenda with a presentation of of the Allentown School District's twenty-one, twenty-two State Performance Data. The team will provide an overview of results and examples of the strategies and next level of work to improve student outcomes. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. At this time, we're taking public comments on agenda items only. Do you have any cards? Thank you. We'll move forward. At this time, I'm going to ask that Mrs. Tiffany Pulla come forward and do a, this is an action item, regarding the two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three Healthy Plan Update.
Good evening. I would like to request the board's approval of the updates to the two thousand and twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-three Allentown School District Health and Safety Plan. As a recipient of ESSAR's funding, Allentown School District must have an approved health and safety plan. And as Dr. Burks mentioned, the plan must be reviewed every six months. We will continue to monitor and review the latest guidance and recommendations from the Center for Disease Control, Pennsylvania Department of Health, the Allentown Health Bureau, St. Luke's Hospital, and Lehigh Valley Health Network. The guidance, along with the Lehigh County COVID community levels, will continue to inform appropriate prevention and mitigation strategies. The plan is a fluid document and may be updated at any time. Critical components of the plan continue to include quarantine and masking. So asymptomatic individuals who are COVID positive and able to return following a five-day quarantine are required to continue to mask for an additional five days. That change was made back in March, on March third of two thousand and twenty-two. Also, masks continue to be available to those who choose to mask. And in addition, individuals who are COVID positive are required to continue to report positive cases to their supervisor or the school nurse. And to give you a snapshot of where we were last year compared to this year, in January two thousand and twenty-two, eight hundred and fifty-eight total COVID positive cases were reported. That was an average of a hundred and sixty-six students per week and thirty-three staff cases per week. Currently, in January of two thousand and twenty-three, we had a hundred and nine total COVID positive cases, with an average of twelve student cases and ten staff cases per week. Do you have any questions?
I do. Um, looking at the plan, I believe it stated um, that we plan to keep the buildings clean. So with, what is our plan to maintain the cleanliness of our buildings with the amount of custodian staff we currently have? Mrs. Brown, I guess you can't hear me. Mrs. Brown. Can everyone hear me? Okay, thank you. Sorry, I speak softly. Latasha Brown. My question is, since it is our responsibility to maintain the cleanliness of the buildings, what is our plan to do so with the amount of custodian staff we currently have?
Madam, Madam Chair, may I?
Yes, she may.
To assist?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Smith, can you please assist with answering that question? Thank you. Sir Smith is the Executive Director of Facilities, Grounds, a whole lot of titles. So, Miss Smith.
But anyway, I don't have the plan in front of me. I have shared that cleaning plan with with the board and the public as well. Um, the, I will, give me a chance to give you that plan. It is a very detailed plan, even addressing the staffing that we have. They have to give you, it's a very detailed plan. It's pages long, and I would just be winging it if I stood here and told it to you. Now I'd rather give you the complete details.
Okay, do you plan, just for, you know, reference case, do you plan to email it or do you plan to present it publicly?
I could do both.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a question.
Yes.
Picking back on your question, are you asking that question because there's a problem?
Um, yes, because, well, I also have a healthcare background, right? And I understand the importance of cleanliness and germs and different diseases. So I know we lack numbers of custodian staff right now. So it is a concern if we're going to have proper cleanliness within the buildings for our students and staff. So that's why I asked that question.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Are there any other questions before Ms. Polak takes her seat? There are no further questions. Thank you, Ms. Polak. Next, I'll ask that Dr. Brandy Sore come to the podium to, this is also an action item regarding the two thousand and twenty-three dash two thousand and twenty-four Allentown School District Instructional Calendar.
Thank you. Good evening. The Allentown School District Administration is requesting approval of the two thousand and twenty-three, two thousand and twenty-four Instructional Calendar, including the following section fifteen oh two Official Local Holidays, November twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, December twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, March twenty-second, two thousand and twenty-four, June nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. The proposed calendar exceeds the state-required instructional minutes and meets contractual requirements for the Allentown School District bargaining units. The two thousand and twenty-two, twenty-three Allentown School District Instructional Calendar has a student start date of Monday, August twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three. The final student day pending an emergency closures is Friday, June seventh. The first teacher day is Monday, August twenty-first, and the final teacher day pending any emergency closures is Monday, June tenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Start and end dates for all bargaining units will be adjusted to reflect their contractual working days, and the Allentown School District approved flexible instruction days will support our effort to maintain the schedule and the dates.
Are there any questions? At this time, I have to apologize to the public. Don't go anywhere yet, because these were two, the first one was an action item, and we didn't, we didn't make them have to take a motion. So if, if I may, can I take both together? Is that okay? Okay, so at this time, um, we're gonna, um, I'm gonna ask that, uh, I would like someone to make a motion to move the two thousand and twenty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three Healthy Plan Updates and the two thousand and twenty-three and two thousand and twenty-four Allentown School District Instructional Calendar um, to our regular board meeting that's going to be held on February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three.
Who moved?
I'll second.
First by Ms. Nancy Will, second by Ms. Phoebe Harris. Is there any further discussion?
I I just, I was looking at the calendar. I, I might be really old school. There's, there's only one day off in the beginning of April. Um, there's no other days off, because I remember back a long time ago. I mean, if, I guess it's called like a winter break now, but is there nothing that's a Good Friday or anything like that? They don't, we don't do that anymore?
Dr. Sore.
Uh, where, where, where are you referencing?
Like anytime in April, I guess, in that area, just some kind of observe.
Mr. Palmer, that holiday is the end of March and then the beginning of April. It's really early next year.
So that's what the spring holiday is?
Yeah, March twenty-eight, twenty-nine, April one.
It didn't, okay, that's why.
Yeah.
Thank you, then.
Thank you, Dr. Sore. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing and seeing, and this moves forward to our next regular board meeting of the twenty-third of February. At this time, I'm going to ask that Melissa Smith come forward, and this is also an action, discussion and action item, and it's regarding the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Cohort Eleven External External Evaluator.
Thank you. Good evening. Tonight, we request the board's approval to higher steps to achieve as the external evaluator for our Twenty-First Century Cohort Eleven at a cost of twenty-five thousand dollars per cohort or per year. We are required to hire an external evaluator for each of the cohorts. The cost of the evaluator cost must fall within five percent to eight percent of the grant total for each year, and this falls within five percent of the grant total. This year, we received three Cohort Eleven grants. There are three schools in each grant. As of last week, we are servicing two hundred and forty-eight students across nine elementary schools in Cohort Eleven. Cohort eleven A is Hayes, Sheridan, and Washington. Cohort B is Dodd, Jefferson, and Roosevelt. And Cohort eleven C is Ritter, Moser, and Elementary Newcomer. The evaluator is responsible for mid-year and end-year evaluations as defined by the Pennsylvania Department of Education, and the evaluator will also assist with federal and state reporting.
Thank you. Um, may I have a motion to move this item, which is the Twenty-First Century Community Learning Centers Cohort Eleven External Evaluator rate evaluated to our next regular board meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three?
I'll second.
Mrs. Latasha Brown first, and second by Mrs. Phoebe Harris. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposes? Hearing and seeing, and this moves to our regular board meeting of February twenty-third, two thousand and twenty-three. Thank you very much, Ms. Phoebe. At this time, I'm going to ask that Dr. Michael Roth come forward and provide us with a presentation. And this presentation is discusses the ASD two thousand and twenty-one dash two thousand and twenty-two State Performance Data.
Good evening, everyone. Just waiting for the presentation to be coming. You're blessed. I'm not going to talk about budget. We're saving that for Mr. Linderman. So as it is coming up, I really do want to thank you for the opportunity to provide a review of the two thousand and twenty-two um, state assessment data to the Allentown School District Board of School Directors and also to our, our community and to our public. Tonight, members of the administrative team will be sharing information about the district performance on state assessments. We will begin with what drives all our work, the mission, vision, and core values of the Allentown School District. We will then provide learning objectives for tonight and dive into informational slides that include insights about the pandemic, attendance trends, and specific results on PSSAs and Keystone exams. We will share how these insights have shaped our strategies to improve outcomes, what progress looks like for student performance this year, and what drives the team's next level of work. The Allentown School District mission and vision shapes all our work as they remind us that students are the focus of all the actions that take. All the strategies we plan, all the things that we put, put in place are designed to support our students. The Allentown School District's core values operate as the vehicle for designing our strategies within that context of excellence, partnership, and equity. We allow these to drive each of those actions that we take and make sure that we are holding true to these core values. As the district is a learning organization, we frame all our opportunities to share information with learning objectives. This evening, we are aiming for school directors and our learning community to develop a deeper understanding of how the pandemic affected student learning and attendance, the trends in attendance, along with district performance on PSSA and Keystone assessments over the past six years, and the strategies, current performance measure results, and our next level of work as a district. We all know that the pandemic affected our community, our schools, our students, and our families. As we shed light on the attendance and assessment results tonight, it is important to review the context of these results. As a reminder, Pennsylvania closed all schools on March sixteenth, two thousand and twenty. The Allentown School District was not a one-to-one device school district, nor had technology been fully leveraged for learning prior to the shutdown in March of two thousand and twenty. Despite this, students, family, and staff worked incredibly hard to secure technology and develop virtual learning opportunities to serve our students during that difficult time. Assessments, state assessments were canceled for the two thousand and nineteen, two thousand and twenty school year, and the district decided to not administer the English Language Arts PSSA for the two thousand and twenty-one school year. Participation on the two thousand and twenty-one Math PSSA was incredibly limited. Allentown School District remained all virtual for instruction until April nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. So for over one year, the school remained in all virtual instruction. For context of how the shutdown and cancellation of assessments affected our students, those students who were in grade five for the two thousand and twenty-one, twenty-two school year were taking the English Language Arts PSSA for the first time when they were fifth graders. They did not take the assessment in grades three and four, and second grade was the last year they were in a classroom with instruction not impacted by the COVID-nineteen pandemic. This chart shows the average daily membership, or ADM, that is reported to the state each year for the, for the district. Average daily membership is a calculation that determines what an average day looked like in terms of attendance. This chart shows the average daily membership was, what it was in each grade level across the years two thousand and twenty, two thousand and seventeen through two thousand and twenty-two. We use this data to look at what ADM was across the grade. As you can see visually, the four years up to the start of the pandemic showed level average daily membership. Each grade level experienced a drop in the two thousand and twenty-one school year with a slight increase in the two thousand and twenty-two school year. We also watch how cohort of students attended. For example, our grade three ADM was ninety-five percent in two thousand and twenty, which dropped to eighty-three point four percent in two thousand and twenty-one, when those students were in grade four, and then increased to eighty-six point two percent in two thousand and twenty-two, when those students were in fifth grade. This chart shows the average daily membership reported to the state for grades six, seven, and eight. The same pattern we saw in grades three, four, and five appears in grades six, seven, and eight. When we look at a cohort of students, our grade six students in two thousand and twenty had an ADM of ninety-one point six percent, which dropped to seventy-seven point five percent as grade seven students, then increased to eighty-three point eight as grade eight students in two thousand and twenty-two. Finally, this chart shows the average daily membership reported to the state for grades nine, ten, and eleven. The same pattern we saw in the previous slides is also apparent with these grade levels. When we look at a cohort of students, our grade nine students in two thousand and twenty had an ADM of eighty-six point one percent, which dropped to seventy-four point five percent as grade ten students, and then increased to seventy-six point nine as grade eleven students in two thousand and twenty-two. We will now take a look at performance on the English Language Arts PSSA for the past six years. This chart shows the percentage of students who were proficient or advanced from grades three through eight. We share this chart to demonstrate that as an administrative team, we review the data as grade level performance across the years, but also in terms of grade level cohorts. For example, our third graders who scored at forty-two percent proficient or advanced in two thousand and seventeen um, then continued to track their performance all the way through two thousand and twenty-two, where they scored at twenty-two point five percent proficient or advanced um, as eighth graders. It's also important to note that we see a similar pattern in terms of a drop that occurred with our third graders who scored at thirty-five point two percent in two thousand and nineteen, and then scored at a twenty-two point four percent uh, as sixth graders in the two thousand and twenty-two school year. Again, you'll note on there the two non-applicables in two thousand and twenty and two thousand and twenty-one, when our students did not take that particular assessment. So English Language Arts, in this chart, we are providing insight into the proficiency levels of our students' performance on the two thousand and twenty-two English Language Arts PSSA from grades three through eight. In this chart, each bar graph represents the breakdown of the percentage of students scoring below basic in red, basic in yellow, proficient in green, and advanced in blue. We have also included the total number of students tested and the overall participation rate that is tracked by the state. It is important to note that this overview of the data helps us to track patterns that occur in one administration and trends that will occur over time. We are using two thousand and twenty-two as a starting baseline for measuring performance outcomes moving forward. We look at this data and see a pattern of a decrease in the number of students scoring below basic in grade six and seven with an increase in grade eight. As this is a snapshot of one moment in time impacted by the pandemic, we will analyze and watch these data from future administrations to determine if trends continue and how that informs our work in curriculum, instruction, and assessment. Now going to ask Mr. Kaufman, our Director of STEM, to come forward and review math results with you.
So this slide for math provides that cohort perspective that you saw earlier for English Language Arts. Uh, if we examine the progression of the cohort that started in two thousand and seventeen as third graders, you see thirty-two point six percent, and they track across time. Uh, and then in two thousand and twenty-two, we see the uh, two point three percent um, in two thousand and twenty-two for those. Um, this is the same pattern that we saw for ELA, um, but to a greater degree due to the, the COVID loss uh, in those years in between. Remember, though, for those, uh, that that two point three percent, those students as eighth graders, the last time they had a normal, you know, educational experience not impacted by uh, COVID was fifth grade. Uh, if you go back up there to, to two thousand and nineteen. Additionally, if we look at the cohort that uh, starts there at uh, third grade in two thousand and nineteen, you'll see the same type of pattern uh, ending up in two thousand and twenty-two at four point eight percent. But I want to call attention to how the uh, not available data is a little bit different. Uh, for those individuals, um, in two thousand and twenty, nobody took the assessment. In two thousand and twenty-one, the assessment was delayed into the fall. So it was the fall of two thousand and twenty-two uh, when we got the two thousand and twenty-one uh, test in, and those individual students had transitioned grade levels or building levels, I should say. And so that, that record didn't go with them, that, that test didn't go with them. And so that's why you see some cohorts with two NAs and then some with just one. We then do a similar uh, examination of just the two thousand and twenty-two results for math. You'll see that the um, similar type of uh, breakdown for the stacked bar graphs. We have below basic in the red, uh, the basic in the yellow, the proficient in the green, and the advanced in the blue. Also included are the total numbers tested, as well as that participation rate that is sent to the state. A trend that you'll notice, obviously, when you look at it, is the rise of the below basic students and the diminishing proficiency during those grades six through eight. Uh, these student uh, performance levels, though, um, when combined with data from other sources, can be utilized by buildings and by teachers to differentiate core instruction and plan for interventions uh, that will move all students towards higher uh, performance. And so that's uh, the way many of our buildings would look at that data uh, to, to plan for instruction as well as intervention.
Thank you, Kyle. So for science PSSAs, it's important to note that
So, for Science PSSAs, it's important to note that the data looks a little different. It is difficult to do cohort data with science because science only tests in grades four and grade eight. So you won't see the same kind of data with that, but we also did not test in 2021 and 2020 and 2021. You can see in science that we began to increase in overall proficiency up till the COVID years. We lost a little ground over that time. However, with the new science standards and the continued professional learning for teachers, we're expecting this to continue in the positive direction in Science PSSAs. Here, for Science PSSA, similar to the last graphs, you'll see the below basic in red, basic in yellow, proficient in green, and advanced in blue. So for the Science PSSA in grades four and eight, this slide shows you the number of students that were tested in the spring of 2022. You can see there was an 83.3% participation rate. With the new PA Science standards just being released, we'll be monitoring closely the success in these grades, especially as the assessments will be changing in the 24-25 school year for all students in grade, well, grade four, grade five, and grade eight with the new science standards. So here, just as a reminder, with Keystone exams, Keystone's are course-specific and not grade-level-specific. So students take Keystone exams at the end of Algebra I, at the end of Biology, and at the end of Literature. In comparison from 2017 to 2022, in Keystone Literature, Algebra I, and Biology, there was a slight increase in Algebra I and Biology coming out of COVID. However, looking at the scores over the course of time, there hasn't been a huge decrease for the spring test takers in the Keystone exams in all three subject areas. Here you'll see a similar graph with the below basic in red, basic in yellow, proficient in green, advanced in blue. This slide shows for Keystone exams, the number of students tested during the Spring 2022 testing window for each of those courses. So you see 2,118 students for Algebra I, 1,496 students for Literature, and 1,557 students across the district in Biology. We will be monitoring over the course of the next few years as well the number of students in below basic and basic performance categories to identify the trends of the impact of the coherent curriculum that's being completed in K-12 core content areas through the curriculum development and the review process.
As you may remember, our district comprehensive plan was presented on August 11th, 2022, and approved by the board on August 25th, 2022. In our comprehensive plan, we identified priorities in the areas of reading, mathematics, English language acquisition, and attendance. The measures of the student performance in our district comprehensive plan were based on the data shared this evening. These measures focus on foundational literacy skills, grade three reading on grade level, grade four and grade math, grade eight math proficiency, English language acquisition, and chronic absenteeism. Our targets for outcomes include 85% of kindergarten students will demonstrate mastery in foundational early literacy skills, the percentage of students reading on grade level in grade three, and the percentage of students demonstrating math proficiency in grades four and eight will increase by 30%. 80% of our schools will meet or exceed statewide averages in English language development scores and reducing chronic absenteeism to 20%.
So we're going to continue more strategies that we're doing to improve the outcomes. The Curriculum Development and Review Committee has been working over the last year to ensure that all stakeholders are involved in the curriculum work to identify scope, sequence, skills, competencies, units, and materials and resources across all the core content areas. We began with K-12 Social Studies as the largest efficiency in the curriculum audit and are working simultaneously on 912 ELA and K-12 Science due to the new PA Science standards. Over the course of the year, we also have layered in K-12 Mathematics and K-8 Literacy as well. We have provided professional learning opportunities for administrators on the Danielson Framework for Teaching to ensure that all administrators are calibrated when doing walkthroughs and observations. And through the Executive Leadership Learning Academy, we have continued learning for our administrators with a focus on the PELP coherence framework to prioritize the instructional core in buildings. That's the relationship between the students, the teachers, and the content through the lens of three things. One, leading for equity and access. Two, learning and teaching. And three, high-functioning teams.
In order to improve student outcomes, we implemented a number of strategies connected to attendance. Our outreach workers were redistributed from middle school to elementary school with an intentional focus on working with students and families to reduce the overall number of absences. We currently have seven outreach workers who are assigned to two to three schools each and support our attendance team meetings, our student attendance improvement plans, and home visits. Schools hold weekly to bi-weekly attendance team meetings to discuss students who are at risk of being chronically absent or are chronically absent, and collaboratively work together to identify and monitor tiered interventions to improve student attendance. We hired social workers who, as part of their work, provide individualized group or family support to reduce absences for more critical absentee cases. They currently support at Allen and Deer High Schools. In addition, our outreach workers were trained in Check and Connect, which is a research-based mentoring program that has shown success in the reduction of absences. Additionally, our school attendance teams completed a self-assessment to support the implementation of a school-wide strategy and tiered approach to attendance.
We remain intentional in our creation and application of positions, programming, and professional learning opportunities. We've expanded extended learning opportunities for students, which have included our 2022 Summer Scholars Experience, 21st Century After-School Programming, and the addition of after-school programs at two elementary schools that had a void there. We've also funded an early literacy intervention position at each of our elementary schools to address students in our primary grades. We have instructional coaching and math and literacy intervention positions staffed at middle schools. And we continue our sustained and comprehensive professional learning series in the Program Letters, which stands for Language Essentials for Teaching, Reading, and Spelling, which is our professional learning opportunity for our K-3 teachers. For our grades four and five teachers, we have added in keys to literacy writing across the content areas, professional learning, as well as continued work within text-dependent analysis skills. And in addition, for our grades three and five, we've added in lessons that address foundational skills that may have been missed during our COVID closure and break with using resources from the Hagerty Primary, excuse me, Primary Extension Curriculum for Phine衔 awareness.
And then continuing with support specifically around math and science, 2022-23 professional learning responded to the performance data trends, focusing on differentiation within small groups to meet the needs of students across a range of performance levels. Supporting that was then professional learning with how to leverage data to inform instruction. And we are also working on developing a mindset that prioritizes accelerated learning over remediation during that core instructional time. Our high school students are supported in algebra with Ascend Math digital platform, which also includes multiple professional learning sessions for our teachers, included sessions for our teachers. For elementary teachers, we have an on-demand math professional development program deployed through a Zern digital platform. Mentioned earlier was the CDRC work for math and science. Math has been reviewing literature on high-quality math instruction as part of that process. Science committee members are deeply involved in understanding the significant shifts that are required in teaching and learning to meet the new standards that are upcoming. Fundamentally, you'll notice a shift where students are going to be less learning about and much more figuring out, which should have significant results. Additionally, each building's leadership team developed building-level systems, professional learning, and instructional supports based on their specific data. So, looking at the data, one of the things you look for are evidence of growth. Where are we growing? Where are these things working? And so the next few slides are focused on that type of data that we're able to extract from our various platforms. So this slide in particular focuses on the growth from our STAR benchmarking platform. This one is for literacy. And what you'll notice here is that STAR utilizes a growth metric called Student Growth Percentile. I'll do a short version of this, which provides insights into how students grew between the benchmarks compared to other students who performed similarly on the first benchmark. So growing one end of the continuum is different than growing at the other end, and so that that metric takes that into consideration. The bar graphs provided show the percentages of students at each of those grade levels in one through 11 in literacy, who grew at or above typical growth according to STAR. So that's the percentile ranking is a scale. What you examine, when you examine the numbers in the table about the numbers tested, I do want to point out a few things. You'll notice that some lower numbers at both ends of that spectrum. So when you take a look at the lowest end there, our first and second graders, we use a product from STAR called Early Literacy, and that's where those students, some of our students, start, and so they won't show up in this particular data. And that's why those numbers are a little bit lower. And then kindergarten is not showing up here either. They use a separate program called DIBELS to do literacy assessment. Lastly, what's important here on these numbers is that even in the middle, it's not the total number of students who are participating in benchmarking. This represents the students who took first and second benchmark. You need both of those to get that particular metric out of STAR. On the next slide, the exact same, everything I said about student growth percentile is still what we're looking at here, but this time for mathematics, and this is in grades one through eight. What you'll notice here as well is that it represents the percentage of students who are growing at or above typical according to the STAR benchmarking system. When you look at the range, grades one through eight, kindergarten's not listed because they use a separate platform, a separate assessment called the Universal Screener for Number Sense that we're using for the first time this year. And then you'll notice our high school students aren't listed here because we switched to using STAR Algebra and STAR Geometry, a different platform, and so the numbers don't go together. In particular, STAR Algebra and STAR Geometry do not include a growth percentile metric, and so we have to represent that data some other ways for our buildings. For you this evening, what I'll showcase is, on this next slide, Ascend Mathematics. So I mentioned that we're using Ascend Mathematics to support learning for our algebra students. So what you'll see here is that Ascend Mathematics provides students with a diagnostic. It identifies areas of strengths and areas of weaknesses, and then students can engage within that platform to attend to those weaker areas mathematically. Additionally, it generates a tremendous amount of data for our teachers to be able to inform their core instruction or to provide other types of intervention systems. What the benchmarking system, or what the Ascend system does is also a pre-assessment and a post-assessment for students, and they get that data very much delivered to them. But here you'll see mean pre-assessment scores for all of our high schools that are high school students involved in the program, and then our post-assessment scores, as well as then the gain in scores that they're making while they spend time utilizing the Ascend system and the teacher response to the data that's coming out of that.
Our next level of work is the most important focus in continuing to support the continuous improvement of our systems and leveraging of resources to improve outcomes for all our students. Tonight's data, as we shared it with you, it's a wake-up call. It's a call to action. It's showing that we need to work and do and have worked, and will continue to work with our systems, with our resources, to leverage them to do the very best for our students, to provide them the best that links back to our core values, links back to our mission, and it links back to the vision that we have as a school district. These outcomes that we keep talking about will continue to be rooted in that commitment to excellence, partnership, and equity through those core values. I do want to say this to the board and to our community. We know that our students are much more than a number, and we want to ensure that we are taking the whole-student approach to their learning and development. What that means is that we use data like those shared tonight to coordinate our work and take proactive actions to support improved attendance, literacy and math performance, and insights into learning experiences through the walkthrough data. We intend to offer the Summer Scholars Program again this year that was delivered and developed and delivered last year. And I'm smiling because I know how exciting that was for so many of our students and families to participate in. So we are really excited about how those opportunities can create more and extended learning for our students. And finally, the largest lift will be the continued curriculum instruction and assessment work through our curriculum review and development cycle. As was mentioned, the stakeholder groups are working to address the findings of the 2017 Phi Delta Kappa Curriculum Audit. They are focusing on building our Tier One supports for all students and strengthening our instructional core. That work includes the K-12 Social Studies, nine through 12 English Language Arts, and K-8 Science, which will be coming to the board for approval in April. They are currently reviewing materials and resources, nine through 12, in science, and will continue to build out course offerings and materials that will be through the summer of 2023, brought to you for approval in fall of 2023. And professional learning will be occurring throughout the summer and throughout the next school year for full implementation of that new curriculum. And finally, K-8 English Language Arts and K-12 Mathematics are working on the curriculum review process, and will be reviewing materials and resources in January of 2024 for board approval in spring of 2024. And of course, embedded in all that will be the professional learning for our teachers, because as we know with the instructional core, if we make one change to either students, to the content, or to our teachers, the relationship, any change in one of those means that we have to make a change in others. And so we share this data with you. We appreciate your support. Hopefully, you heard reiteration of many of the things that you have supported as a board over the past year, and we are committed to reaching those strategic goals that are embedded in our comprehensive plan. And as Dr. Burks likes to say, we need all of you in this, because we get better together, right? And all our strengths are needed. So this isn't just about me, Dr. Sawyer, Mr. Kaufman, Ms. Smith, Ms. Bryant. It's about our principals. It is about our families. It is about our teachers. And most importantly, it is about listening to and getting what we need for our students. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Roth.
On board members, this is our meeting. This is our committee of the whole meeting. So just for clarity, so that you'll know for the new people. We go over the, I'm the committee chair. We go over the agenda of what's going to be at this meeting, but he just presented to us all collectively. So if there's any communications that need to be had, then this is the time for us to communicate as a board, because clearly we see that there are some things that we should be discussing, I should say. So is there one?
I have a comment. I appreciate and respect your comments, right? I've been a parent within this district for almost 20 years. Although the pandemic happened and these numbers have dropped significantly, we've had issues far before the pandemic. So, looking at that time span, I am not hopeful. However, I'm very optimistic. You said something very important. It's not one person. It's all of us, and it has to start from the top. So with that being said... So with that being said, the board, administrative staff, our teachers, any person that is hired through the district. We have to do our jobs. It is very disappointing to see that we often approve many contracts that are billions of dollars. And again, I'm not talking about since I've been on the board for a year. I'm speaking about as a parent for many years from the district. Our educators come and they present all these pretty PowerPoint presentations. And our students are not being educated. So as long as I'm on this board, whether if my children are in a district or not, I have one left in a district. It is my job. It is my duty, excuse me, duty. It is my honor to make sure that I consistently reinforce that our students currently are not being educated and hope we hire people that can do the job, support the people that are currently doing a job and get rid of anyone that is not willing to do the job. That's all I have to say tonight, but thank you. I appreciate it.
So I want to make a comment, if I may. So I hear what you're saying. But I said this before, I don't necessarily feel that that the people who are here, who are doing the work are not doing the work. I feel that there's things that are in place that's preventing them from doing the work. And I've said it over and over and over again that, and this is not a conspiracy theory, believe it or not, people run up to you and tell you their whole life story when you don't want to really hear it, right? So what happens is many of our wonderful teachers and administrators, their hands are tied. I believe that. I know that because everybody can't be wrong. And I said this before, I said this, so I'm saying that to say because I heard you say they need to go.
No.
But we don't need, we need to start building on what we have.
So I didn't say they all need to go.
No.
I said those that are doing a job, we need to make sure that we're supporting them to continue to do their job. We have great teachers. However, we do have some that are not so great. So what I'm saying is we need to clean up our act as a whole.
Right. If you're not going to be a part of the solution, then if you're the problem, then you need to.
Exactly. And that's at every level. And anyone that has a political agenda or whatever the case is, so even what you're saying, I'm saying that as well. We have to do our jobs as a whole.
I agree. Also, let's talk about ascend and diagnostics. Things that we have in place. Those are things, I'm sorry.
No, I have a question.
Are you still asking?
Okay, no, I thought you were moving on.
So with the send, if people don't know, the send is a, is a is a program. It's technology, right? And so, you know, I have, I think it's wonderful because we approved that, right? But if it's not being administered properly, or we have all these technology or diagnostic based programs in, you know, if you send my kid home and you tell him, hey, do it and come, he might get his older brother to help him out. You understand? And then he's getting all these, these, I'm just being honest. I mean, we all came this way. So I don't, I don't have childhood amnesia, right? So we get these numbers, this data, right? And this data is not really real data. We have to be real clear in terms of how all these things that we are paying for, how it's actually being delivered when it comes to instruction. That's how we're going to become a function in this school district, right? And I get the feeling, because like I said, folks run up to you. People get tired. We all have a limit, right? So what happens? Some people say if I can't beat them, I'm going to join them. You know, if this is too much, I'm leaving, right? And at the same time, because this district, I don't know how many employees we have, but we, twenty-one hundred, how many are we supposed to have? I see we need to know. These are the things, right? So if you're running with a skeleton crew and you're trying to make it happen after a while, folks get tired. And as a result, our students are the ones who suffer. You know, many, many of us sitting in this room understand these numbers, they're not acceptable. They're doing exactly what I've been saying since two thousand, I'm not going to say seventeen because I sat again and just watched. Two thousand eighteen, we're housing our students, and I don't know if that's what we really want to do. But we have to stop and start building with what we have so that we can get real numbers. We're graduating students and I'm sorry, I want to say positive stuff. And I'm really looking forward to Allentown eventually becoming a model school district. I haven't given up. But we have to start fixing the things in our district that need to be fixed. We talk about money. We talk about contracts. We talk about safety. We talk about all these things. But at the end of the day, our kids are still coming home with nothing between those two ears. And I don't mean to be, you know, chastising folks. So this is our meeting. I'm looking that way, but this is our meeting. So as the education chair, I want to hear from my board, from my colleagues, because you don't belong to me, right? We're all on the same team and we've been commissioned to do a job for our students and our community. What can we do to ensure that we're not throwing the baby out with the bathwater? That we're not playing power and getting rid of people who need to be here, people who've been here forever. What are we going to do? What can we do? Tell me what we need to do because obviously with the numbers that we see, something somewhere is not working. And it's our job to see that it, what, give me some feedback. I talked about the diagnostic. I talked about, I didn't talk about create a culture where students want to be in school. You know, I happen to have a household where I can't get rid of kids. And it ain't clean either. You know what I mean? But I'm just saying, they want to be there because there's a lot going on that's positive. Do we have the climate and culture in our school district where our students want to be here? We wouldn't have to go looking for them. I've been here since two thousand seventeen. This is two thousand twenty-three. And I understand the pandemic did, it shed a lot of light on a lot of things, you know, we benefited in some kind of way. You know, you guys work really hard. You know, many, some people left. Some people are still hanging in there. But we got to do something different. The definition of insanity is doing the same thing over and over. And I want to know, I really want to know, what can we do to make sure that we are delivering the instruction? I don't want a computer to teach my son. I don't mind it being a support, you know, something that's there, a tool. But I don't, I want the teacher to look him in the face and say, this is the reason why you got that answer. I want you to say to him, look, you didn't do that because I know what you know. We need teachers. We need to go back to basics. We need teachers, teachers that care. We need, we need teachers to make parents care. Sometimes parents throw their hands up and say, I don't know what to do. And we need that teacher that we all can look back and we can say, you know, I remember Ms. Patty Benstock who came and said, you know what? This kid has this, has what it takes. And if we just rally around these kids or this kid, it'll work. I'm sick of hearing our middle school and our high schools, all we're talking about guns and we're focusing on the wrong things. We shouldn't even let the, allow the newspapers to print that stuff. Because our focus should be on undoing what we've actually done. Because we haven't provided a space and a place where they can feel safe or where they can feel like, you know, that's the only way they're going to get attention by holding something up to a camera. And I hate the fact that I feel like I'm preaching, but this is what we need. And we're in Allentown now. I'm telling you, if these kids don't, and some of you might live in other towns, affluent towns, I don't know where you live. But what's stopping those, those kids from growing up and being adults and becoming your next door neighbors? We can fix it. We can fix it right now. Stop fighting each other. Start building with the, with the, start building with the people that we have in this district. If they're crazy and they look like they got four heads, talk to them and chop them down to two heads. But we need to work with what we have. I mean, I'm, and I'm, look, I want to be part of the solution, not the problem. And it seemed like every board meeting I'm open in my mouth. But this is what we need for our students, white ones, black ones, green ones. All of them. When we hear negative stuff, and I'm going to leave it here and let other folks speak, when we hear negative stuff on the news, I don't know if you, you guys heard about, there was a kid in another school district somewhere, but it was, they put some negative stuff about some black students. You know what I'm talking about? Some people are shaking their head. That's a reflection of us. Because maybe it didn't happen in your, in your household, but they seen it or heard it somewhere. And somewhere along the line, somebody allowed him to feel like that was all right. And unfortunately, they're babies. And then now they're being put on the chopping block as a result of the things that we didn't do. So I'm just going to say, Allentown, we got to do better. And they put us in these seats. We got to do better. I'm done.
I have a question slash comment.
Brown.
Yes. Ms. Brown. So I'm directing my questions to page ten and twelve. Looking at the, the PSSAs. Now, we can clearly see that the pandemic did something. That's fine. But what, what came to my attention was two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen. Clearly something happened there. If we look at the math PSSA, if we look at the, the fourth grade that transitioned to the fifth grade, it dropped twenty percent. But if we look at the sixth grade transitioning to seventh grade, it went from sixteen percent to eight percent. Fifth grade to sixth grade transition from twenty-six percent to sixteen percent. Seventh grade to eighth grade from eleven percent to eight point nine percent. So when I look at these numbers and I see this, even if the pandemic didn't happen, we'd have had a problem. They would have still, they still are not prepared. They still weren't ready. The pandemic just really heightened the situation. So when I look at this, I start to think, okay, what happened between two thousand eighteen and two thousand nineteen? Was there a change in leadership? Is there a lack of teachers that's, that's happening there? And we can also identify the schools. We can break it all the way down to the schools and see which schools really underperformed in the PSSAs and go to those schools and do assessments. Was there a change in principal? Who were the teachers that were doing it around that time? We can really break these things down so we can really manage it on that scale. I know we're looking at it on a huge scale level, but that to me was like a red flag. Because that's, that to me, when I look at this, that's where the problem kind of really took a decline. So if we can identify those schools that really underperformed there, we can do a separate assessment of those schools and see what's happening there. Is there a challenge with those kids when they're, when they're taking a test? What's, what's really happening? Are the teachers really teaching? What's really happening? Was there a transition of a principal? There is a principal really pushing through policies and procedures. That's what we really need to do when we're looking at these assessments. I know we came up with some strategies and they sounded great. But I really want to break this down to a micro level so we can really manage the expectations of what we can do. Because looking at this two point, two point three percent, I don't even. Like I'm scared. I have a nine-year-old and a thirteen-year-old. I have babies that are in the school district. And I know what this is like when they have to come home. I, I even hate seeing the word basic and below basic on the S A. We should change those words. I hate it. Yeah, I know that's the words that they have, but they should change those. But I can just imagine them coming home with their test scores and going home to parents and showing their parents that. I comfort kids when they, when they get the PSSA in my after-school program. I comfort them when, I'm getting emotional. I comfort them to go home and share these scores. So it's not like they really don't want to do something about it. They do. They want to do better. But we have to make sure that the systems that we have in place, the policies, the people that are in place are actually doing what they're supposed to be doing. And that's all I have to share.
Thank you, Mrs. Brown. Miss, um, Ms. Dr. Sultana, you got to work with me. I'm sorry. And it's not a hard name, by the way. It's me, not you. Doctor Sultana, please. Santana. Thank you. You, okay.
No relation. So I have, I do have a question and a comment. My question is, I'm not familiar with the Summer Scholars Program. Can you tell me a little bit more about that?
I will do my best. I was not here, but I did see the presentation and I've heard wonderful things about it. So the Summer Scholars Program, they had, they'd had summer programs in the past, but nothing as kind of comprehensive and as large scale as happened last year using ESSR funds to overcome the, especially the ESSR funds for learning loss. So K to twelve. K to twelve program.
Talk about that.
Let him finish.
Okay.
He can let her.
Thank you. Yeah, and I, I do want to make a comment about the, the test scores. And I may be on my own little island, but I'm more of the idea, as you stated, that I look at students as a whole. And I have been in education a very long time. I'm not going to say how long because then you're going to know I'm old, old. But it's been a very long time. And, you know, when you look at these charts and you look at the percentages and especially when you see the colors, you're like, oh, oh my goodness, that's horrible. And yes, it is. I don't get that alarmed when I see results for standardized tests. I don't believe that they are a good measure for student success. And I can go on and on about that, but we don't have the time. For me, when I look at that, I see, yes, we have to do better in certain areas. But that doesn't say to me that all of these students are going to be unsuccessful because they're not proficient in those areas. You know, I, I look, I was more looking forward to the strategies part of this because when we got this information, I looked at it and I said, oh, okay, moving right along. I'm more about what are we doing with our students to make sure that they know the information that they need. I can tell you for a fact that you can take any one of those students that did not test well, pull them aside, teach them the information and test them, and it's not going to reflect the same as that. I can tell you that for a fact. This is not a good measure of success. I know we have to do it. I realize that. But that's why I don't get alarmed when I see that. So that's, that's just my two cents. I, I think that obviously, obviously we have to do what we possibly can to get those numbers up. But these numbers are not showing that our students are not capable. I don't believe that. Not for one minute. I believe what I see in the classroom and what I hear from teachers. That's what I believe. This doesn't reflect that accurately.
Thank you, Dr. Santana. Do you want him to finish and then would you like Dr. Clear or you fine?
Uh, no, yes, I would like to know about the summer program.
Yes, thank you. So the summer program, it was held over last year, said very comprehensive K to twelve. There was an academic component to it. There was an enrichment component to it. There was an intervention component to it. And there was also an activities component to it. So again, when we think about it from the standpoint of the whole child, you know, there were options for students to participate in learning opportunities that extended into activities that they had, you know, basketball games. You know, just kind of the sense of building a community again, right? After coming off of, off of the pandemic. Dr. Sawyer, anything to add to that? Or Ms. Bryant, because I know you were instrumental in it as well, or Ms. Smith? Okay, thank you.
With that, they just didn't do, hold on, I want to expand on to that because it just wasn't, it just wasn't the school district. It was also the community. We had nonprofits come in and do basic things with students, not just basic, but also different things that was not the norm. So that we could, learning loss was identified and as well as it was cultural. And that was a really big thing. We brought in the culture of our students into those summer programs so that, that, that we could bring that back together again. So the, the, the social loss was. So the law, the law, the the social loss was um, I don't know the word. Um, my menopause is hitting, kicking in. But it was the fact that these students felt better about themselves by the time the summer program was done.
Thank you.
So I just want to, I guess I'll share a story about, because I don't have any students in the ASD, but I was educated in the ASD. And this goes to, there are teachers who do kind of, and this is to Ms. Brown's point, there are teachers who do kind of just push you to the side. But then there are teachers who do the right thing. I myself took this test back in, I believe it was fifth grade. And they said, when you finish, you can go play in the playground. So I just quickly went through this entire test. I don't even think I read a lot of it, and I'm being completely honest. By the time sixth grade came around, I was placed in, and I might be dating myself. I don't know if we do this anymore. I was placed in something called like six F, I believe. Or you you know what I'm talking about, Jen? Yeah, but you know what I'm talking, it was, it was basically really low. I was in a math class and I don't remember which one. The teacher wrote out a long division problem and he said, you know, you you probably can't do it in your head. I did it in my head real quick. He wrote another one and he said, now you're just showing off. That was a teacher who did, I would say, did not think about what was going on. I then went into a science class and I went into a social studies class and I just completely killed everything. It was to the point of where they had me take another assessment test and get placed into a different class. Now, I had Mr. Falco. He then, when I got to high school, said, how was class go? Because he remembered me. And he's, I told him my teachers and he said, you're in the wrong class. And he put me in the gifted classes. So I believe that back then, administration, we were good back then. And I do believe that it has gotten to a point where we've been messing up for so long, we are running a race with a lap behind. And that's the problem that we're running into. So I believe that we can turn it around. It's just that we all need to start coming together and really thinking about what is best for our students. You mentioned less learning about and more figuring out. What does that look like? And I would just like to know how are we incorporating that? Because I'm gonna be honest here. Since I've gotten here, there's been a lot of software that we've just said, yes, 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 yes to. At what point are we like, that's enough? Because for me, I feel like the most that I learned was when a teacher engaged with me and said, you're not doing enough. I don't feel like if you go through that software, you're going to be told, you're not doing enough. You're better than that. We need that back. We need to understand why we have students going through in-school suspension and what are they doing in in-school suspension? When students are being suspended, what are we doing when they're being suspended? Because for me, the education never stopped. My mom was in the hospital and I still was told I had to read. So when does the education stop for us? Does it stop when they leave the building? Are they not our responsibility anymore? I, I've never like, I've looked at these scores. I've, we've all looked at these scores. But when we're falling off like this, what do our check-ins look like? Because I'm hearing we're gonna do this, this, and this. I've been hearing this for years. And then our scores are still dropping. So why, and this is nothing against all of you, why should I think this is anything different? I need to know that this is going to actually change something. I need to know that we're going to do and look at a student like me and say, you're not doing enough. Because I can guarantee you, after having conversations with students myself, there are students in classes who they don't come to school because they don't care because we're not challenging them. So out of all of this, I mean, it, in the presentation, it did sound great. Don't get me wrong. But we have these students who I I still don't feel like, even through all of this, they might not be challenged. They might not be sitting there and saying, that teacher cares about me. And especially if you're just sitting in front of a screen. I understand it's a new age. I understand it's a new day. But what are we doing to get that personal relationship with those students again? Because I will learn from you if you show that you care and you want me to learn. I am not going to learn from you if you put me in front of a notebook and tell me to fill this out. And that's just me, but I can guarantee you that's, I'm not the only one. So what are we doing different? Because, and I heard less learning about more figuring out. But what is our administration? What are our teachers? What are our principals figuring out about our students? What are we doing to engage them to want to learn? That's what I need to hear from Maya.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer.
Okay. So my comment was not based off of just these test scores, right? And as I stated, I've been a parent of a child who's been in a district almost twenty years now, right? Now, again, we do have teachers that are great teachers. But there are many factors that do not support the education of our students. So for example, I ran youth leadership programs, different youth programs as a youth mentor. Um, I had multiple students before the pandemic and after the pandemic that graduated without the ability to read. Without the ability to read. So that's high school. Right? They graduated high school without the ability to read. That is a problem. Another problem. My nineteen-year-old daughter principal told her that she would never be anything. That's from Allentown School District, Allentown School District. What warrant that principal to tell my child that? Who was seeking help because she was being bullied repeatedly because of her race? Because of the eczema on her skin? That has nothing to do with test scores. It has everything to do with who we have in this district. I do not believe that our students are incapable of learning or that they have any potential. That is far from my belief. Um, and again, we do have great teachers. There's a teacher, I'm I'm not gonna say any names, but she's in this room. As a parent, the time that was hard for me to be home when I was working and going to school, I had a teacher sit down and do extra work with my daughter, reading to help her. So I support our teachers. On many occasions, as a parent, I've been told that students don't receive homework because I always question, why, why is my kid coming home without homework? And it's been stated to me on many occasions that we don't provide homework because the students do not complete it. I don't think our students are being educated in the education, if the education that is being taught is not being reinforced. So how do we expect them to retain any information to prepare for a test, a quiz, or anything if they are not being reinforced? The work that is being taught is not being reinforced. So that's another problem. Another thing that I want to say is, I encourage everyone to revisit our academic audit. Because there are clear statements in there that prove the curriculum audit, thank you for the correction, that proves students were given coloring sheets during observation. So everything I stated is not to disagree with what you said, but to elaborate on my experience over a period of time, almost well, over a decade, as a parent, as well as a youth mentor, running youth programs, as well as having kids come to my home with their problems, well, as well as parents. So all I'm saying is collectively, we have a job to do. And to answer your question as to what we need to do, I don't have all the answers, but since being on this board and, you know, again, as a parent, we have to stop reacting based off of relationships. We make a lot of agreements based off of the relationships that we have with people. And that has nothing to do with educating our kids. So we have to stop doing things in ways, again, the definition of insanity is to keep doing things the same way with expecting a different outcome. And we're not gonna get a different outcome if we continuously do those things. So it is our job to make sure that we are educating our students and also providing support to the staff. That even goes to the administrative level. Our principals, our teachers are not receiving the support that they need because we're dysfunction up here. I recently submitted a post on social media to inquire about how many people, because I've been receiving messages that people put in applications and they never received a response. So we've had people in positions to address those issues. There's a whole sum there. We're not doing what we're supposed to do and it's our duty to do that. So with that being said, you know, I just feel like as a board, you know, I respect my colleagues. We are not always gonna go into agree with each other. But again, as a youth mentor, as a parent, and as a human being, I just want to do the right thing for kids. I'm gonna consistently share my voice. I'm gonna continue to work with you all and just hope that we can come to some common ground and do what we need to do and stop doing things based off of relationships or the way we've been doing it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brown. Is there another? Okay, so that was, thank you for answering that question because I was gonna ask as the educational chair and and maybe sum it up and maybe have a list or something. But my question is, in addition to what um, Dr. Roth presented to us in his, in the team, is there, is there a specific ask that this board? This is a time where you can, I can write it down. We can ask. Um, what are we looking for? Is there anything in addition to what he already said that the district is gonna do? I got what you said.
Well, with the curriculum audit that we had done, what steps are we taking to um, correct those problems that we saw in the curriculum audit?
So what I will say is, after I met with Dr. Roth, just to get the agenda, I did go through, not thoroughly, but I did see, and he pointed out, and maybe Dr. Roth, if you can, um, there are some things that he, many things in what he presented tonight that is in line with that curriculum audit. So it's not like that curriculum audit um, like, we're ignoring it. It is definitely dead spot on with what's in the audit. But the the then thing that I spoke about earlier is to ensure that the delivery is being given. You know, we can keep having meetings after meetings after meetings and see numbers after numbers and after numbers. And I I agree with you, Dr. Santana, that the numbers don't always tell as it relates to standardized tests, and we all know that. But when you have a district like Allentown and you have surrounding districts and you have affluent districts and you see numbers that don't look like that, there's a problem somewhere. So I'm not, definitely not um, dismissing that. And then being on this board from two thousand seventeen to now, you see the the small wins as it relates to our students, but I feel like we could be a little bit further, a lot further if we would just get rid of, rid of some of the stuff, the political bull crap, right? Oh, I didn't almost, okay, I did good. And and stay focused on what the real reason why we're here. We're here to educate the kids. If we can do that, and again, I'm gonna keep harping on that. I'm a firm believer that we are supposed to build on what we have. Okay, any kind of supervisor, administrator, or leader, if you a real leader, you can lead. You know, so you you just gotta put aside your personal differences, maybe your biases or whatever it is. At the end of the day, we come here at a time to educate the students and we leave here ensuring that they're educated. So um, my ask, if there's, if, you know, I want to, because I want us to be engaged, right? We're we're cha- um, challenged with this. Um, I would like to know, um, Dr. Burks, how many positions do we need? We had that other part, right? Of how many? But we need that other part. Um, the other thing, I want to know what we can do to ensure that we are definitely, it's not the numbers. We gotta figure it out. That how can we ensure that that instruction is really getting to the students? We have to figure out a way to to listen because too many people, in one day, four people walked up to me or called me or did something. I don't even know how they got through because I was trying not to answer, answer. But to say, talk about the hostile environment within the district. We gotta do better. We don't come here to get rid of people. We come here to build people. The little people and the big people. And I want to hear more about our middle school to high school. I want to hear more, but I want to see more. Maybe I'm using the wrong word when I say more, but I want to see a greater focus because I don't want to continue to graduate students that are not ready. And I know we have that wonderful, we have some systems in place, you know. But I want to, I want us to focus more on the relationships. Do you know it's hard being a teenager? And we send, we tend to, you know, I'm I'm tired of seeing the stuff that I see and the stuff that I hear. So I'm, this is not, this is a conversation with my colleagues. Um, this is not a chastisement. This is what we need in order to educate our kids. You know, we can do better. And I'm talking, and and even letters of community, parents, parents is are saying, I had an honor roll student. Now my kid went to a F. That's a problem. So I'm not just making this up or pulling it out of my hat. So um, thank you. Um, if there's nothing else.
Well, I have one, just one more thing. Just just one more. Um, Dr. Burks, if we can figure out if some of the things that we put in place, some of the texts that we approved and put in place, what are we doing to make sure that there's proper training on how to use it? Because I'm hearing a lot of that. That the students, these things that are being put into place, um, that the students don't know how to maneuver it. It, they've found ways to go around it. And we have to make sure that even on the teacher level, that they are well-trained on how to use those things.
Talking about technology?
Yes, all the technology. Yeah, I'm I'm sorry if I wasn't clear. Yeah.
No, no, no.
Tech.
Making sure I read properly.
Because we've approved so many new tech technology and if that's because that's what I'm hearing, that that's what's really teaching our students. And if they, if the tech is there and they don't even understand the tech, then they're really failing. So we have to make sure that the teachers like are well-trained on how to use the tech so they can actually train the students on how to use it because we we're spending a lot of money on the tech.
Thank you.
And um,
Mr. Palmer.
Mine was a previous question that I had, I believe, two weeks ago. If you can also add to the list of, can we find out the students who finished the dual enrollment? Have they finished their college degree? Because I believe it's more than two years at this point. Um, to see the amount that have or what they are doing now, if at all possible. Um, and I do want to say I agree um, that it was something that was like the administration going down and we are included in that. Um, so we have not been doing, and I'd say we because I'm sitting here as well. We have not been doing everything that we can to make sure that we are doing what's right. And I mean, we need to, we need to make a solid rock in our administration. I mean, we've I still feel like there's a long way to go for it. I mean, we're, I'll give you the example, we still have a superintendent sitting there that still has interim in front of her name.
Right.
Like, what are we doing here? Like, we need to start focusing on what we're doing and working our way down from that. Because unless we start getting everything right, we can't give them proper direction to get everything right. So we need to start doing that ourselves.
Thank you, Mr. Palmer. Is, I know we have others. Did you have something to say, Ms. Smith? Okay, well, we're gonna help you. Do you have something? You don't? Okay. Thank you.
I have one.
Dr. Santana.
I want to make sure, um, because you mentioned that there are other districts where the numbers don't look like this. We have to make sure that we're not comparing apples to oranges. Um, as an example, I work out in Bryn Mawr, Main Line. If you don't know where that is, it's a lot of money. I worked with someone that was paying about thirty-five hundred dollars a month for a one-year-old. They were teaching her like two different languages and everything else. Who knows what everything else is, but a lot of money. We don't have that here. And we're looking at these numbers. We're looking at middle school. We're looking at high school. Can we improve that? Yes. But it's a slow turn. There's no magic that we can say, okay, there you go. Next year, you're gonna do better. Because they don't have the foundation that they should have had to be able to turn it around. It's not a quick turnaround. Um, our students don't get the Um, our students don't get the foundation that other students do in the wealthier. School districts. And um, I'll leave that alone. I can go on, but I'll leave it alone. And the other quick comment is. Uh, Ms. Brown, I would be that teacher that you don't like. Because I don't believe in homework and I'll tell you why. Our students spend a whole lot of time in school during the day. And I'm of the belief that if you have a student for a period or a whole day, depending on what the grade is. Um, you should be able to cover what you need to cover. We're sending students home with homework to parents that have no idea what's going on. Happened to me too. I would fight with my kid every day with math homework. That's not the way my teacher does it. Don't talk to me about Common Core. I counted on my fingers. That's how I do math. So, you know, we're sending students home to parents. First of all. Sometimes there's no parent at home when the kids get home. Um, second of all, if the parent is there, they. Probably don't know what went on in school, so they can't help the student. And thirdly, you know, they get home, they're tired, they don't wanna deal with that, whatever the case may be, but. I I feel like it's something that we need to be able to take care during the school day.
That's not a justification to me. It's not a ju- how do you take it from short-term memory into long-term memory?
It it's not a justification.
I was a student also and if you was my kid's teacher, I wouldn't dislike you. It's not that I dislike them. You know what I mean? It's just that. I'm a product of receiving homework and whether if it was the weekend whenever, it was my duty to do that. And what I'm saying is we let our students off with not providing them what they need, the skills they need. We offer, you know, resources at school for parents to come in and help, but if they come back with it wrong. Is the teacher's job to review it. My youngest goes to a charter school. He gets homework. He gets homework. So. He's learning two languages. He's learning Mandarin and he's learning Spanish. So I see it, yeah, and he's very good too. But at the end of the day, we can't allow our students to not receive something. Because, you know, the parent may be working. Like I said, I was that parent that worked two jobs or a job and go to school full-time. Full-time job commute and go to school full-time while I'm raising four kids. And my kids still did what they had to do. Not everybody is able to do that, but our students also go to. Many nonprofit programs in the community where they receive that extra support. And I know because I also help them and I have relationships with the nonprofits. I'm just saying we can't, that's not enough. We have to do better. That's all I'm saying.
Thank you, Ms. Brown, and thank you, Dr. Santana. Oh, definitely. I can't see your name tag. Does he have a name tag there?
Oh, I don't.
Can you say your name for me?
Carlos De Leon.
Carlos?
De Leon.
De Leon. Please speak.
I want to talk about the homework thing and I may be biased because I'm a student. But homework has always kind of just been like a hindrance on my back. Like, I get home. Like, I don't really wanna worry about that. I'm just gonna like search it up or copy, if I'm honest. That's just what most kids do. And I don't believe it really is that good to help us.
So you want me to be your teacher?
Good teacher.
Thank you so much for sharing and 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 we encourage that from all of our own students. This is, this is your meeting. And so we don't wanna make decisions around you. We wanna make sure that you're part of the process. So I thank you for chiming in. And if that, if no one else has anything in the interest of Tom, which is this is why we're here. This is the most important meeting. Of the school district. I just want you guys to make note of that because it talks about education and that's what we're here for. But if I don't hear anything, if I'm not hearing anything or anyone else, I'm going to go to the next thing. And let's see what that is, okay? I scribbled over everything that I have in front of me. Okay, so at this time, thank you, Dr. Roth. I appreciate you. Um, is there any other comments from the public or non-agenda items? We have one card?
Greetings, everyone. My name is Barbara Redman. I am a new elected PA State NACP Assistant Secretary. I'm also the Allentown. Brand Secretary and the Chair of the Women in NACP, which we call WIN. Um, I'm here today to ask women in the NACP sort of ask. Uh, for an ethnic breakdown of how many employees you have in the entire Allentown School District. I noticed that you said you have twenty-one hundred. And out of twenty-one hundred, we wanna know the ethnic, we would like to have the ethnic background. And I will be calling the uh, HR tomorrow to request this as well. Um, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Redman. Is there another? Is there any old business? Is there any new business? Is there any grass catchers? Hearing and seeing none, may I have a motion to adjourn this meeting? All in favor, let it be known by saying aye, aye. Is there any opposed? Thank you. We're now going to our next.
I'd like to call the order of the Building Committee of a whole meeting of the Board of Directors of the. School District for the City of Allentown for today, February ninth, two thousand three. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda items and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments at the beginning, at the beginning of the meeting is limited to agenda items only. If you wish to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to the Deputy Superintendent Ms. Ramos. And comment comments cards are on the podium. Do we have any things? Okay, um, Dr. Burks, do you have any remarks?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, good night, everyone. This evening, there are five action items for the board's consideration. The items on this evening's agenda support the district's focus providing equity and access to resources to enrich the environment of the school community. Items for consideration include new lockers for Trexler Middle School. New pla- a new playground for Dodd and Union Terrace Elementary School. In addition, there is an item for consideration relatively, well, oh, sorry, related to safety and operations. As we request approval for the replacement of the fire notification system at William Allen High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Burks. Um, if it's okay with the board, item two and three, I'd like to do together. Because it's about playgrounds and and help with the time.
Fine.
Good evening, once again, everyone. Uh, tonight I'm requesting board approval of a PA Co-Stars state contract. With corporate environments of twenty-six oh one Baglio Circle Bethlehem PA one eight oh two zero. And this would be for the lockers and installation at Trexler Middle School. This is for a cost of a hundred ninety-six thousand four hundred eighty-four dollars and eleven cents. This will be funded from the facilities at twenty-three, uh, twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four budget. This action request and agreement provisions have been reviewed by the district solicitor. And I recommend this item be considered added as an action item at the regular board meeting on February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
For the benefit of the board and the new board members, can you just explain what Co-Stars is?
Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Tonic for doing my job.
So for the for the benefit of the board and those uh, who may or may not know, uh, PA Co-Stars is is a. A state contract. These these were items that were bid by the state. And these entities bid with the state and were awarded contracts via this estate. So they have complied with all the PA state procurement laws. Uh, uh, next month I will actually be bringing public bid items to you, which is another form of uh, PA public procurement.
Okay, so this is an action item. May I get him a vote? Because I'm gonna do a discussion. Okay, I have a second. As well, uh, any discussion?
Yes, I have a couple of questions. Question number one, will this, these, will this um, wind up as a line item? On our um, financial report, will we see exactly? What, we saying one ninety-four? But the the reason, I guess I should ask my first question. My first question is. Did the building committee, did we see what we're buying? Are we buying a merry-go-round for this amount? Or did we get a chance to see what it is that we're actually buying, even though it's?
So these are the lockers.
Okay.
That's okay.
For playground, one says playground equipment. I thought we were taking them all together. Oh, okay, so I'm ahead of the game. See, now you know what my question is. But yes, you have the lockers. I don't have any discussion.
Say no discussion. All in favor? Oppose? Eyes have it, motion is carried. Now we will go to um, items two and three together.
So again, tonight I'm requesting board approval of again a PA Co-Stars state contract with Recreation Resources USA. Five oh three North Walnut Road, building two hundred, Kennet Square, PA, one nine three four eight. This is for playground equipment, uh, and and installation for Dodd Elementary School. Um, this comes in at one sixty-five, one hundred and sixty-five thousand three hundred and fifty-four dollars. Um, and for Union Terrace, it's a hundred and sixty-four thousand two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and zero cents. These will both be funded from the facilities twenty-three, twenty-four budget. Uh, again, the action requests and agreements provisions have been approved by the district solicitor. And I recommend the item considered as an action item at the regular school board meeting on February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
The action item, it has to be voted on. May I get a motion?
I moved.
Have a second? All right, any discussion?
Of course, everybody knows what my discussion is. I wanna see what we're buying. I would like to see what we're buying. Um, I definitely, because. We wanna make sure, not that I'm questioning you. I just wanna see what we buying, that's all.
And just, and just so you know and the rest of the board knows, um, Tom Smith doesn't pick these playgrounds out. I I facilitate facilitate the process in which we procure them and bring them to the board for approval. Um, these are uh, the, the entities, the the recreation resource. Meets with the school principals and the stakeholders within the school. And they sit down collectively and they pick the the age-appropriate uh, playgrounds, equipments to fit the size that they have available for a playground. And you can certainly see the.
I wanna see it.
You can see the equipment, the the specific.
Because I don't wanna buy, I I don't want inflated pricing. I wanna make sure it's age-appropriate. I mean, that's not my department, but I'm concerned. You know, I wanted a playground over at the haze. We didn't get, and so I was too late. I just got on the board. So I'm I'm early now. I wanna see what's. I know, but it. It's a whole nother can of worms. They already, but if I can see what we're buying.
You certainly.
More could see what we're buying. Because you know, if I, if I go to a building and I say I don't like it, right, they're gonna say you voted for it.
It's true.
Thank you.
I will get that.
That's it. That's all.
That's it. Any more discussion? This is after time. May I get a motion?
So move.
May I get a second?
I made the motion, Dr. Santana, second.
Excuse me. Alrighty, all in favor? Any opposed? Eyes have it. We move on to the next one, number four.
Tonight I'm requesting board approval of a grant of right-of-way to PPNL Electric Utilities Corporation. And this is for the right to construct, reconstruct, operate and maintain its electric and communication facilities. Consisting of one pole and one anchor guy. And overhead facilities, um, including such other wires, cable fixtures and apparatus necessary. For the convenient transaction of business of PPNL. Upon, across, over, under, and along the Todd Elementary School property. This authorization of the right-of-way will allow PPNL to to install a new pole and equipment. Prior to the start of our summer GISA capital projects. And for our board members who don't know the acronym GISA, that stands for Guaranteed Energy Savings. Uh, Act of Pennsylvania. It's an energy savings program that we've entered into and we're using Esther funds to fund energy savings programs. Um, to so to support that capital project at Dodd Elementary School. Um, this, this pole and guy wire necessary to bring in new electrical service. Uh, we will be putting H, upgraded HVAC and air conditioning in five elementary schools this summer, Dodd being one of, one of the five. So this pole is necessary for that new electrical equipment to support that. So again, this action request has been reviewed and uh, by the district solicitor. Recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular board meeting on February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
May I get a motion?
Second.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, go right ahead.
So you stated that we're using Esther funds to support the energy saving process?
Correct.
What's the plan once the Esther fund runs out?
So, so as far as this. So to to continue it, to continue the GISA program, the GISA program can go for up to twenty years. And every year you can fund it by different methods. The first three years are all items that will be funded by Esther's funds. Once the answer funds are expended, you can then use capital funds. Or you could, you could, uh, you could float bonds or you don't have to do any more projects.
Okay, so pretty much we're gonna have to figure it out once the Esther funds.
What we did previously, because we have to get air conditioned because of COVID and everything else and that, the Esters gave us those extra funds.
Yeah.
We used those to put. Air conditioning systems in our, in our, in our schools that never had them before. Um, ionizers that would never had before. All these things were done because we got those Esters fund and we set this up. So this is now the third year of doing this. So that, you know, now we just had the, what, the five, was it the five schools left?
Last year it was three schools. This this summer it will be five schools and.
Okay.
And the following summer it'll be um, fi- five more schools.
Okay.
And these Esther funds must be spent.
Okay.
For us to be comfortable in our schools. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it.
And I am requesting board approval of a PA Co-Stars state contract with Johnson Controls Fire Protection LP. Sixty-three thirty Hedgewood Drive, Allentown, PA, one eight one oh six. This is for the replacement of the existing and recently failed fire notification system. Um, at William Allen High School. Uh, this, this uh, is coming in at ninety-eight thousand four hundred and fifteen dollars and eighty-nine cents. Uh, the current communications technology has reached end of life and no longer being manufactured. This replacement will update the fire system at William Allen uh, to the latest standard in fiber fiber optic communications. In addition to ensuring the system can be supported with replacement parts, unlike the current system. This will be funded from the twenty-three, twenty-four facilities budget. This action request and agreement provisions have been reviewed and approved by the district solicitor. And I recommend this item be considered as an action item at the regular board meeting scheduled for February twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three.
Alright, this is an action item. Um, may I get a motion?
Motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
A second.
Any discussion?
Once, well, if it's approved, I don't wanna say once approved, but to me it's common sense. But anyway. If we approve this, right, how soon would they be replaced? Like, this process would take place?
For the, for the fire system?
Yes.
It is scheduled for the, for June of twenty-twenty-three.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Usually most of the work is done during the summer.
Just wanna make sure. Fire is safe.
All in favor? Any opposed? Yeah, I just have it. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Thomas. Um, any comments for non-agenda? Okay, any old business? Any new business? Seeing none, may I get a a motion to dismiss?
So move.
Second? All in favor?
So, thank you for that, uh, Phoebe. Um, I'd like to call to order the finance committee of the whole meeting of the Board of Directors. Of the School District for the City of Allentown for today, February ninth, twenty-twenty-three. The board welcomes and invites public comment. You may address the board on agenda and or non-agenda items. The first opportunity for comments at the beginning of the meeting is limited to agenda items only. If you choose to address the board, please fill out a comment card and hand it to our Deputy Superintendent Ms. Ramos. She had her hand up. Uh, comment cards are located at the podium near the door. And once recognized, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record. And kindly limit your remarks to three minutes. And I would like to go to our, um, do we have any comment cards? And um, any remarks from our? And, um, any remarks from our acting superintendent?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Good night, everyone. Again, this evening, there are six agenda items. We begin with a budget discussion with a brief review of revenue, updates, and a high-level review of estimated expenses. In addition, there will be requests from Lehigh Carbon Community College, Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit, and Lehigh Career and Technical Institute. Finally, uh, this, I'm, now I'm getting so excited. What I'm most excited about is a purchase for technology. Laptops for every paraprofessional in the district. Yes! The district was awarded grant funding for this, this specific purchase. And it will only need, uh, we will only need to expend seventeen thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars to purchase four hundred laptops. So for all the paraprofessionals who are listening, I heard you. And so we are so excited that we will be able to provide these laptops to you if the board approves this, of course. And so, yes. Because they play a vital role in the instructional program. We have lots of software, as you mentioned, and they need to be able to access that particular software as well to support students with their academic success. And so we also provide lots of information throughout the district for the entire learning community, and they play such a vital part of our learning community. So they need these laptops.
So, is this some, something that they carry everywhere they go, or is this something that they really?
So it depends on you. Similar to, similarly to our teachers, they will be able to take them home. They will have these laptops to use as a, a tool for them to prepare to support our students. We, we were awarded this, and we see them again as a vital role, and as the board mentioned and all that, we, we believe in capacity building and helping to develop talent within the district. Many of the professionals that I talk with, many of them want to become teachers. Many of them wanna move on to other roles in the district. We provide professional learning for everyone in this district, and we have a, an extensive professional learning plan that we're working on right now to include the Paris, because as we've mentioned here, and the board has mentioned, we want to grow from within. So we need to be very strategic about how we tool them with the skills that they need so that they could be successful.
Can I just point of order? This is an, an action item that we're gonna revisit. So can we, can we hold discussion for when we have been presented by, by the, the people that are presenting the, the memo and?
Okay, so the, um, first action item that we have, it is actually, uh, Mr. Linderman and our superintendent are actually, and I want to say that in true transparency, we will continue to have these discussions leading up to the budget. And this is your time to ask any questions as we go along, and then we will have the final budget, budget presentation. And then we will have the final budget presentation, but we will continue to do this monthly for full transparency. So everyone in the audience, as well as our fellow board members, we're getting acclimated towards the budget and thinking more about it. So we have, um, Mr. Linderman here, and our superintendent will go over our budget.
Thank you again, Mr. Palmer. We're just going to do a high-level overview of some of the items we talked about last month. And as a district, as my academic team shared, we are making decisions based on equity and access for all students. We are also focusing what we call on the instructional core. That is the heartbeat of the work that we do as a district. And every financial, as well as academic decision, will be mission, mission-centric and aligned with the work that's the next level of work as it relates to academics within this district. Tonight's overview, we'll, uh, review our goals again. We'll talk about our, the budget creation timeline and communications plan. Uh, Mr. Linderman will detail a, a budget overview of our relationships with L, L Tri C, uh, Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit, and L C T I, our revenues, expenditures, cost drivers, and the historical act one index, and the next steps as it relates to the budget process. As we do this work, we also want to remind it, our work is in support of the students. So every time we present, we're gonna have the number of students that we have within the district and the demographic makeup and our, I'm sorry, and our core values as an organization. Who our staff is. Sorry about that. Like this guy's got a mind of his own. Hold on. Sorry about that. A little ahead, the other way. Okay. There we go. Students, staff. Our budget goals. Our goals are to present a balanced budget that supports the district's comprehensive plan by allocating our resources towards increasing student achievement in reading and math, decreasing chronic absenteeism, increasing our graduation rates, increasing language acquisition for English language learners, and we'll talk a little bit about that as we go throughout the budget development process, allocating resources with the goal of providing equity across all schools, focusing our resources to directly support classroom learning and teaching, and supporting the implementation of a whole child. We talked about that, um, in the academic presentation that our students, one part of our charge is to foster their ac-, their academic, or what we call their cognitive growth and development, as well as their social emotional wellness. Mr. Linderman is gonna review our budget timeline, um, to date, and he'll give you an overview, but we've been conducting budget conversations with all schools, and we've asked all stakeholders, all of our, uh, school leaders to engage their stakeholders, families, as well as their students in the budget development process. And so those, those discussions have been happening for the past few weeks and will continue to through late, late February. Mr. Linderman.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Burks and the school board. Um, I had some concern earlier that, uh, I might not get on till this morning. And as it drug on, I had some concern that I wouldn't get home in time for the Eagles game. Uh, but that being said, we're, we're, we're here. So, uh, I had to pick up where I left off last month. So this is the third time, uh, we'll be reviewing the budget. The, the second time with, with some very preliminary numbers, I'll just remind you, last year, the first time you saw any numbers was April seventh. Uh, tonight, we're gonna review some updated revenues. Not a lot changed, but we're, we're gonna review it a little bit. Um, and we're gonna review, um, one of the things we have, uh, people here from, uh, the, the three organizations that Dr. Burks talked about, uh, we have to review the required contributions that are gonna be needed from Allentown School District to, uh, support those budgets. And in March, we, we are gonna come back with some more refined numbers. Hopefully some, some, some staffing numbers. We're gonna look at charter schools um, and things like that. And, and again, like last month, we do not have any proposed tax, uh, impact for you in, in here yet. Um, then in, in, uh, in April, we'll, we'll be getting a little, little bit closer with the, uh, the property tax relief money will be notified to us in, on April fifteenth. So we probably won't have that in time for the, the committee of the whole meeting, uh, but we will, we will get that to you as soon, as soon as we can. And we also have, um, in, in March, we'll have a better, we'll, we'll know the governor's budget, but by April, we'll have a better understanding of how that may impact, um, Allentown i- in our budget process. So then May you have to approve, and I'm not gonna tell you about the prom date and the marriage, but that's May is the prom date and, and June is you're married to the budget. So, um, but tonight, as, uh, um, Dr. Burke said, that actually the budget is just a discussion, but embedded in the budget are three kind of mini presentations from the, the community college, from the intermediate unit, and from, from your career and technical institute. I'm gonna give a brief overview, uh, of what you're gonna be required to include in, in the, in your, the Allentown budget. Um, last Friday, uh, the board was given a, a lot of information regarding the community college intermediate unit and the career and technical institute budget. Uh, tonight, I'm gonna go over the impact it's gonna have in Allentown in our budget. Um, and we're gonna give the representatives here from each, each, um, organization a chance to give you a, a little overview and then give you an opportunity to, um, ask them questions about the budget and the process. Um, so up first tonight, um, it has a very, it's a delay. Um, tonight is the, is the, is, first up tonight is the, uh, Lehigh Carbon Community College, um, budget as it affects Allentown. Currently, there's about twelve hundred and ninety-one students uh, from the Allentown to take advantage of this kind of higher ed oper-, this, this higher ed opportunity. Uh, we are billed on a five-year average, so it's, it, uh, our, our F T Es are, are calculated and an F T, one F T E, which is a full-time equivalent student, means that that's a student that is taking twelve or more credits. Um, right now, the proposed budget for Allentown for twenty-three, twenty-four for the community college is, is, uh, a million, six fifty-nine, nine seventeen. It's actually a decrease. Um, and, um, that includes everything. Tonight, we have two representatives from the community college. I'm gonna ask them to come up, Dr., Dr. Bieber and Dr., or and, and Ms. Nestor, uh, Dr. Bieber is the, I hope I said that right. If I didn't, I'm sorry. Okay, so, uh, she's the president of the community college. Uh, something that Mr. Fazio and I did not have the opportunity or the, our, our, our community didn't have an ability. We didn't have a community college in Chester County where we came from, and this is a, an awesome thing for you guys. And Ms. Nestor is the VP for Finance and Administrative Services. So if you wanna give a little quick thing on it and
The budget or, or what we're doing for the community college?
Whatever you want. You, you have one minute.
I've got one minute. Okay.
Go.
Well, first of all, let me just tell you, it's been a, it's, it's a pleasure working with your team at Allentown School District, and, uh, thank you for all you do for our students uh, together and, and all you do for the community. So during the spring's, uh, twenty twenty-three semester, and I heard a comment, a question about the early college. Um, right now, we have about, um, let's see, we have almost, uh, seventy students in the early college program. We've got twenty-seven students in their senior year, and we have forty-two in their first year, completing their first year. And I just have to, uh, give a little shout out to Ailen Kyle, Kyle Alfonso. He is getting his degree in early college and special education when he gets his high school degree um, this spring, um, at A S D, and he is already going, uh, registered for Quitztown University, and he hopes to come back here as a special ed teacher. So that is just an, an outstanding example for him. Um, we are also the A S D's partner in dual enrollment, and right now we have a hundred and fifty students, uh, between Building, uh, twenty-one, Deriff and Allen, um, with about a hundred and fifty students in courses such as psychology, research and composition, Spanish communications. Um, we also have an Aspira first-year experience course, and it's a ten-week course that introduces students to, um, student services, um, covers topics such as study skills, time management, and we have ten sections going in the spring, the spring semester, and the sections are offered, in addition to our, uh, campuses at the college, they're offered at, um, each of your high schools as well. And in the spring, uh, they're working on an Aspira learning committee, uh, community, which will, um, hopefully be offered at, uh, it'll pilot at Deriff. And what that is, is the Aspira course, and it's combined with, uh, instructional coaching and a literature course as well. Um, and also, you may have heard that we, together, we got the, uh, P, P A State Gear Up Grant. And what that is, it'll allow the students in Allentown, um, the grant we titled, uh, for the students to go through the game of life. It's an exploration of career pathways in science, technology, engineering, arts, and math. And the pathways that's been identified, um, are computer science, I T, healthcare manufacturing. So we're thrilled about, those are just some of the many initiatives we have, but I'd also like to mention, because the last time we were here, um, I wanna make sure I address where we are advertising for, uh, to make sure we increase our diversity and our employees. And we are, um, advertising at the diverse, let's see, it is diversity dot com, academicdiversity dot com, Hispanicoutlook dot com, H B U C Career Centers, and the Hispanic Association of Colleges and Universities. Our, um, staffing is almost a hundred employees of diversity in twenty twenty-two, which is for us a continual increase. Uh, certainly since the last time we were here and we questioned where we were advertising. And so, thank you for some of your assistance in that outreach.
If I have a question with, with that, what you just said, you said over, you know, a hundred diversified. My question is, how many employees are there? And where are this? Are they in instructional? Are they in support system? Are they in?
Yep, yep, yep. Uh, no, well, forty-eight are, uh, full-time and part-time. Forty-four are adjuncts in our, um, credit and non-credit, and the full-time and part-time, I can't tell you exactly what their positions are. I don't have them. It goes from faculty, administration, and staff.
Breakdown of ethnicity?
Pardon me?
The breakdown of ethnicity, uh, for those hundred employees?
Um, yeah, I do have that. Let's see, in addition to, so currently, we have twenty-nine Hispanic Latino employees, and that was in full-time faculty, full-time and part-time administrative staff, and full-time and part-time classified. In addition, in our adjunct and part-time teaching, we had twenty-one Hispanic, three A- American Indian, nine Asian, and ten African-American.
And how many employees do you have?
We have three hundred and eighteen full and part-time, and then several hundred adjuncts, if you're taking the adjuncts and non-credit.
So you're gonna do better?
Absolutely. Each year we continue, we have continued to do better. Yes.
Yeah, it's a big joke from last year, so I'm gonna give you that one. I'm still not happy, but I'll give you that. Okay, and then one more question. Um, cause we're looking at, um, currently there's, uh, eight hundred and eighty-five students that attend L Tri C from Allentown, correct?
Uh, there's twelve, one thousand, two hundred and ninety-one students, but if you make them into full-time, the full-time equivalency is the eight eighty-five.
So I'm gonna go back to, with the charter schools that are here in Allentown, and they are, you know, the, um, how many children from there are they included in our numbers? Because we're still paying for them. Because technically, we're still, the tax dollars go with them. So the children that are in charter schools, that's a good one, ain't it?
They are residents of the Allentown School District. They are included in our.
So they are included?
Yes.
Was that, was that all the questions you had, Ms. Phoebe?
Well, one more thing. So we're looking at, what, what, what percentage of is, of your, of, of your budget is coming from Allentown, like twenty-nine percent? Or is it thirty-one percent?
Give me a second. It's right here. Thirty percent, yes.
Thirty, okay, thirty percent. So that means thirty cent out of every dollar is coming from us. But yeah. So y'all not speeding up too much when it comes to diversity. This is still our money, and every, every thirty cent out of every dollar is coming from us. What y'all, y'all doing?
Oh, I can go on and on with the projects, and it, and, and certainly your team can speak too, because our teams work very closely together. I was, I just gave you a few of the highlights of what our teams do together. As far as diversity of our employees, we, we need everyone, and I just listed some of the places that we're advertising, but please, you know, outreach, have them apply. Our jobs are all posted on our website. We're trying to outreach as well. Um, but it, yeah, we appreciate everyone's assistance.
Well, it, it comes down to this, is, this is y'all, it's your money. Are you going out there recruiting? Are you hitting H B C U's? Are you?
Yes.
H U I, okay.
Oh, yeah.
That's what I need to know. Okay. And I think that's it for me right now.
Thank you, uh, Ms. Phoebe. Ms. Brown? Um, does anyone else have any questions?
Anyone else?
I have a question. I have a comment. Um, I didn't wanna speak when you asked me to speak, but anyway, um, thank you for the partnership and opportunity that you provide for our students. Um, I know many students that came back to Allentown School District because they have the ability to participate in this program. Um, yeah, thank you. I just, I'm appreciative. So thank you.
I, I just wanna reiterate, you do have a lot of diversity coming there. We do have our students going to your college. I wanna make sure that there, there's tutoring also available for them, because, because that was a problem last year. That was a problem last year. Because, because that was a problem last year. That was a problem last year with our, our dual enrollment students. Is it, is, is there constant tutoring? Is it being available? And how is it being dispersed?
Oh, well, absolutely. The one that I did miss here was we, we established a success team. So ASD and LTRIC's team works together, meets regularly. And what we have in that team is an early college learning specialist, early college success coach, tutoring, early college academic advisor. And we're looking to add an early college peer mentor program to help orient the incoming students um, with the uh, senior students. So yes, that team uh, has been phenomenal.
Okay, but even also the other students who are already there, who are grown. How are we helping them?
We have a full tutoring center. We have, we have, we implemented what we've used um, a lot of our dollars um, from the stimulus funding was to embed success coaches throughout all areas of the college. From point of enrollment to graduation, and now as people have left, we've embedded them in the college. They've been critical. So they're helping the students returning adults, veterans, early college, yeah.
I just want to make sure you understand, because your Allentown campus is what, ninety-four percent Hispanic? Something like that? It's up there.
Yeah.
Okay, so they're being taught with people that don't look like them. Who don't understand their culture, and I need you to under, you know, that is important to me. To, to represent what we're doing, because we're thirty cent out of every dollar. But at, but at Allen, I mean, but at the Allentown campus, we're ninety-seven, ninety-four percent. That's a lot of money. And that's a lot of money for them not to see. You know, we got to work on what we are, what we're doing here. But, you know, that's being paid for by, by grown adults, and then us. They need to be able to see that and have that connection to it, please. Thank you.
Mr. Palmer, do you want, uh, this is, this is uh, one of the recommended action items for the board meeting. Embedded in the budget here is, is to move this for each of these. Do you want to do them individually, or would you want to wait till the end?
I was going to, and I guess I should have asked first, is it okay if we wait to the end and group all three together? There is room for questions from each one. Um, so we still, this was made so we can ask questions. So yeah, we could just group all three together.
Okay, next up um, is the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit. And tonight, we're looking at the Allentown contribution to, to their general operating budget, which is estimated to be about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars there, and it's, it's estimated because it, it changes depending on that, as they work out our market value and aid ratio and, and our weighted average daily membership. You know, overall, this, the, the general operating budget has increased. But, but below the Act One Index, um, and, and the Act One Index is significantly lower than what your Act One Index. You, you get what's called an adjusted Act One Index. Th- this is below the actual Act One Index uh, for, for schools that are, that are basically less than the point five uh, market value aid ratio. Um, but the contribution that the, the um, CLIU has, has um uh, that requires from their member districts has remained the same for many years, and I'll let them talk about that a little bit. So, and they haven't increased that contribution um, in, in many years. I, I didn't get a, an exact number of years, but it's, it's many. That's more than twelve, 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 twelve. So it's many, it's many, that's many, more than two is many. So tonight, we have uh, Dr. Ebe? Ibe, I'm sorry. I can blame it on my age. And, 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 and Ms. Coy, uh, Dr. Ibe is the executive director and uh, Ms. Coy is the Director of Business Services. You want to come up?
Good evening, everyone. Um, thank you for having us this evening. I'm Elaine I, the Executive Director of the Carbon Lehigh Intermediate Unit. I'm in my thirteenth year in this position. And um, as just stated, the uh, the contribution, which is the general operating budget, encompasses fourteen school districts, just a little bit of a, an overview of, of the, the regional, the regions that we're dealing with here. Fourteen school districts in both Carbon and Lehigh Counties. So um, each of those fourteen school districts makes what would be called a membership contribution that is through the Pennsylvania Department of Education. I do not, I have, in the last twelve years, have not increased that. So even though uh, a formula from PDE, which is based on your weighted average daily membership, the WOTM, and your market value, which again are, are, are driven by Pennsylvania Department of Ed through their formula, it's out of our hands. Um, that determination came up at one hundred and twenty-five thousand, two hundred and eighty-two dollars. That is a difference uh, for the Allentown School District from last year, one, one thousand six hundred dollars. Okay, this particular budget, um, which is required by, by statute, the general operating budget. Um, we use this money to, to pay for the curriculum and instruction services and our educational technology services, as well as our building and um, grounds for the building that is all of yours. It is all fourteen school districts who come to our, our um, office. Um, the curriculum and instruction is a really key part here. Because um, there, as a result of the membership contribution, there are a lot of services that we provide to the Allentown School District that we don't charge for. So it kind of falls under the, the membership contribution. I like to, I have a whole page of them, and I'm glad to leave them with you so that you have them to, to process. But just to give you a few of them, um, we are the school improvement facilitator for uh, DAREF and William Allen. Uh, and we provide monthly monitoring, support, collaboration. Uh, you can write them down, but I will gladly leave this with you if you'd like. Um, collaboration with the Executive Director for School Improvement, technical assistance. Uh, we provide implementation supports, uh, developing data protocols workshop for DAREF. Uh, school climate team, professional development facilitation support. Uh, aligned learning walk tool development support, some of the software that you're talking about. And I know there's a lot of software that, that you have, that's used as a tool to help your, your schools, uh, help your students. Some of those things that are specific to uh, school improvement, we actually teach your teachers how to use. So that's the professional development piece. Uh, we provide professional learning supports, text-dependent analysis and training and coaching for your reading specialists. We provide classroom diagnostic tools, one oh one training, that is directly from the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And we also provide data analysis consultation. Uh, very, very important that it's one thing to get all this data, it's another thing to actually know how to use the data to inform your practice. So we teach that uh, through professional development. Technology resources for scaffolding for English uh, language learners, we also provide. And we provide English learner professional learning support. Um, the list goes on. Uh, we host many, many workshops. Um, world language teaching networks. There's a lot of networking that we actually bring um, many people to our IU. So we have a joint council meeting, for example, which uh, brings all of your curriculum people, as well as all the curriculum folks from all the other fourteen school districts in one place at one time, to try to process all of the changes and things that come from the state. And a lot of times, it's, this is a new initiative, and now they're pulling out this new, new initiative because there's a new administration. So we actually have to get in front of it. My people have to be trained first, so that we can actually make sure that we train your schools. Um, so I'm going to make sure that you have copies of all of that. As now, as for the diversity piece, um, I will admit, as I sat there listening to you ask the question of how many of our staff, I do not have that breakdown, but I will get that for you. And the reason I'm going to be, I'm responsible for not having that this evening, but I will tell you what we are doing. Um, I think I said to you the last time you asked me, um, Ms. Harris, about what we were doing. I said it was, it was so important that was becoming an actual core part of our comprehensive plan. And I am actually one of the team leaders for that part of the comprehensive plan. And we use them, we use the framework from Pennsylvania Department of Education, which is called Equity, Inclusion and Belonging. They use the acronym EIB, easy to understand, because that's my last name. Just so happens, it's just a little bit of humor there. Um, but uh, that the state does use that, and they have an enormous uh, wealth of resources. We are actually adopting that framework because so many of the resources are excellent. Uh, we are currently uh, have a team of folks who, across sectioning of our intermediate unit, we have over a thousand employees. Cross-sectioning of my intermediate unit who are on our team, I'm gonna say about twenty people are part of our uh, comprehensive plan for EIB. And we just finalized our survey, which is extremely extensive. That will be going out in March. Um, and it will ask some of these questions as how do you identify? Um, because some people identify differently, so we want to make sure that we're actually asking uh, those questions. We will be providing all kinds of services that will enable us to be better at providing um, the resources that are needed to embrace all the differences that exist in our intermediate unit. And we're continuing to, we're right now having a hard time recruiting people in general. Uh, as you know, there is a staffing shortage across the board. It's getting a little bit better, but we're still behind. Uh, so we do make uh, an effort to go out and get as many um, really highly qualified people. And we would love nothing more than to continue to uh, increase the amount of um, diversity in, in, in our employee in, in our employee pool.
That's lovely. I'm so impressed, because I did ask you that last year. So how are you helping our school district with school im- improvement and climate and culture when you don't have the diversity? How would you know how to do that?
Well, uh, we have staff that is extensively trained. For example, we have uh, two members of our curriculum and instruction department who are top certified in uh, positive school climate. Um, and resiliency, mental health, all the different uh, factions right now that are, that are out there to um, they, they get the training first, and they bring it in, and they've been training our districts.
Again, but that is not resilience. I'm sorry to hear that. I'm talking about culture. How do they, how do they, can they convey the culture of us? Because we're eighty, eighty-six percent Hispanic and Black.
That's right.
Eighty-six percent. So who are you having, you know, teach or, or, or do those, you know, that kind of um, development? If they're non, if they're, you know, non-melanated?
Well, we're, we're working to hire them, and the, there are people, we probably have only about, I'd say ten to fifteen percent of our, our one thousand employees are, would be considered, you know, um, African-American or Hispanic. But I don't have those exact numbers, and I will get those for you. Uh, it is getting better, but we're still have work to do.
So I'll see you again next year and see what happens. Hopefully, you know, this is, this is my problem. It is my problem. We're, we're, we're hiring people to come and teach these things, and, you know, and do, do the development. But yet, they're not melanated. They're not the, how would you know? I mean, this is, this is frustrating to me. How would you know what our children are going through to teach our teachers when the people you have are not understanding those things? Don't understand the culture, don't understand the day-to-day life, just getting up and going to school. And that's where, you know, I'm serious about LTCI, LTRIC and Lehigh Carbon Unit. I'm sick of this.
What, I'm sorry, what are you sick of?
Sick of the fact that it's not diverse enough.
We're
You're, you're working on it, but you know, if, had I not said anything last year, would you have been working on it?
Yes, we would have been, and we were. I actually am very closely related to the work that was done at the Pennsylvania Department of Education. And I worked very closely with Nicole Holland Sims, who I brought in, by the way, to speak with our um, our uh, superintendents extensively to help them move the needle faster.
All right. Then I'll give you that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything, any other questions?
Um, I think uh, Ms. Brown had a question.
I have a question. Um, so you mentioned that you guys are in charge of the training for the teachers when, when it comes to tech and software. Can you explain to me that process of how many hours do you take to train um, the instructors? And also, um, what happens when you, they, the, the teachers go through the process and they don't grasp the knowledge of the software?
So we are responsible for the pieces that are required by the Pennsylvania Department of Education. So school improvement, for example, on the classroom diagnostic tools, we would provide that training. If you have software that you are employing for all of your district that would fall outside of the Pennsylvania Department of Education mandates, and the Allentown School District called us and said, hey, can you get in front of this, learn this, and do a train, a trainer model, and help our staff? We often will do that. That's part of being an educational service agency. It is not uncommon for us to receive a call from uh, members of your administrative team to say, we need more help. And we will usually do whatever is we can to do, to do that. We, I'd say ninety-nine percent of the time, say yes. If we say no, it's because we, we are probably concerned about having enough time to get it done for you. So the, so the second part of your question is, um, so we go through a training. If somebody needs extra work, we would just continue to, to layer that, that learning so that they actually felt more proficient in it. Yeah, it's not once and done. If you need more, it needs to work. You need to understand it in order to utilize um, whatever the tool is. So we, we would just continue to train you.
So is there a mandated amount of hours that the
It varies.
Teachers are trained?
It varies, it varies, yes.
Okay.
Do I, do I have any other questions? Uh, where do you post for your jobs?
Uh, indeed, I, I'd have to get a list of that, because that's my HR department. It's a huge, it's everywhere. And we go, and we go out and do recruiting as well. But I can get that list free as well.
Okay, um, just for, just for diversity's sake, um, because I, I have to agree with Ms. Phoebe here. I mean, there's a difference between living it and getting trained on it, and just lived experiences, going through life. It's completely different than anything you can learn in a textbook, so.
Absolutely. I wouldn't minimize that for a second.
And I, I do want to thank you, um, LTRIC for having just, where you post your jobs, just kind of letting us know ahead of time. Um, so we would just want that list from you as well.
Sure, absolutely.
They probably mirror each other very closely.
But we'll get it for you.
Thank you. Seeing and hearing no other questions, um, will you continue? Thank you.
Okay, finally, tonight, we have the Lehigh Carbon Technical Institute. Right now, you have about five hundred and fifty-four students there. You had over six hundred and fifty in October. The proposed budget for LCTI uh, next year is uh, seven million, one hundred and ninety-six thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. That's actually a decrease of three hundred and twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and forty-four dollars. I will tell you that um, from our area, I, we, we, we knew the LCTI from down, even down in the Philly area. It's one of the premier technical institutes. It's the largest in the state. Uh, I know in the Philadelphia area, we, we weren't envious of many things outside of Philly. We were kind of snobby. Uh, but we were envious of this institute. They, they really are, are the uh, uh, kind of uh, gold star in, in technical schools. Not to say, and ours were, were good. They, you know, it's just, they have so many offerings and things. So uh, it's one we liked, um, and, and wish, you know, my, having a son who went through kind of technical stuff, would have been nice to have a little more. So um, tonight with us is Dr. Greenawalt. And, and Ms., uh, she's the Executive Director, and, and Ms. Keller is the uh, business administrator, so.
Thank you for those kind words. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the opportunity to present to your Board of Directors this evening. Your district has been a strong and longstanding supporter of career and technical education and LCTI specifically. Thank you, Dr. Burks, for engaging in conversations with me personally and with our stakeholders. I really appreciate your presence at meetings that are held to discuss our school. Thank you. Tonight, you're presented with a balanced budget coming in under the Act One Index. The budget includes the addition of one teaching position to support our population of students identified as English language learners. This is, this is a new position. Currently, there are sixty-five students, thirty-nine from your district, who are English language learners attending LCTI. Educational regulations require that we provide support and instruction to this group of students. We anticipate that this educational need will continue to grow, and I would appreciate your support to add this position to the budget. LCTI serves the Lehigh County specifically, and the Lehigh Valley on a larger scale for workforce development. The robust business and industry community provides significant opportunities for all students to experience a work-based educational opportunity. Currently, your district has seventy-four students, about twenty- Currently, your district has seventy-four students, about twenty-six percent of your seniors at LCTI participating in a formal work-based experience. LCTI continues to be a strong CTE school because of these resources and your students have the opportunity to participate in a school that is one of the largest CTE schools in the nation and is also considered to be one of the best CTE schools in Pennsylvania. So Chuck, thank you for those kind words earlier. Your district built this reputation along with the other eight school districts in this county. There is much pride in our school. Every year we receive calls from parents requesting to send their children to LCTI, but these students must attend the CTE school that participates with their own school district. I share this with you because of the robust reputation that LCTI holds. That reputation grew because we offer programs that have rigorous curriculum, strong connections with the business community and high expectations. This does create challenges, however, especially in the, in the form of high interest by students. There are programs with high, high student interest and limited seating capacity. Unfortunately, these high interest programs have a waitlist. We know that. This is not unique to LCTI, but rather we see this happening all across the state as more and more students and families are interested in a CTE experience. I acknowledge that there has been criticism around all students not being accepted into their first choice program. And we continue to work collaboratively with our partner schools to improve our processes. Our application process is now open and two hundred and ninety students from your district have started an application. Your counselors are working with these students to complete that process and to meet the priority deadline of March thirty-first of two thousand and twenty-three. LCTI will review these applications and begin the process of assigning students to programs. Of course, we will continue to accept applications long after that date as LCTI is an open enrollment school, meaning that we will accept students into CTE programs at any time, provided we have seats available. I do not have the exact statistics on our diversity of staff, but I know that it does not represent our student population by any means and we are working to address that. Because CTE teachers enter the classroom differently than traditional teachers, they come with industry experience and do their student teaching as they enter the classroom. We need to focus on recruitment and retention in a different manner. And one initiative that we're working on currently is to work more with our business community, have our teachers work with their occupational advisory committees and to recruit members that reflect a more diverse population of those, those committees so that we can grow teachers from within that community and we can create networks for our students to connect outside of our classrooms. Work-based education is a key component of our co-curricular problem, our, our program, as I mentioned earlier. And one of the ways it becomes co-curricular is making those connections by formal co-op, by networking, having guest speakers come into the classroom and talking about their experiences in those career areas. At your seat, as I conclude tonight, at your seat, we did provide you with a, a free flyer that highlights some of your graduates and some of your current students at LCTI. There's also some data there for you, for you to review. We are proud of our students and our ongoing partnership with your district. Thank you for your time this evening.
Ms. Phoebe?
Yes. Okay. So last year, Dr. Russian told us that, that your staff was a hundred percent white. He was very proud of that for some reason. And I was pissed and I didn't like it and I think it was wrong. So are you telling me you hired some diversity or you just haven't gotten to it yet? Are you still looking?
We have, we have a little bit less than a hundred percent all-white staff, but where we've added to that,
Is it teaching?
It is not. It, it has not been.
So it's support?
It has been in the support area. When we
Hey, hold on one moment. So I'm looking at this. I'm looking at this. I know Jodi Am because she was on Sunday morning. And I couldn't believe it. I was, this is two thousand and eighteen. It was amazing. So I see black, Hispanic, black. But we don't see that in that staff.
Correct.
That's sad and pitiful.
I agree.
Twenty-nine cent out of every dollar comes from us. Twenty-nine cents. I found me sure from him. How do you justify that? How do you sleep with that? How's that okay?
All I can say is that we can do better and we'll work at that in partnership with you.
Our students are the largest population.
Correct.
This is the largest population, but yet, however, when it comes to representation, you only got three. Other school districts, just because they have more, you know, system, so they have more land and their land is more expensive. They get six, but we get three, but yet we're the, we have the most students. So taxation without representation. So we have no, we have only three out of someone else having six? So how does, it doesn't, that doesn't look well either. That's a state thing also, I know. But this is something that we need to make sure that this happens because we let it go before. I'm not letting it go this anymore. We're not letting this go. This has got to be, it's got to be better and we need more seats. Just because our land doesn't cost as much, but we have more students. And twenty-nine cent on every dollar comes from us. So I'm asking you to work with us because you don't want the alternative.
That is in our, the question was, it, it is in our Articles of Agreement. I'll take that back to the Joint Operating Committee for further, for further dialogue. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, Representative Johnno. Thank you.
I, I'll just add from our end of the state, I, I, I used to work at Great Valley. We had the lowest amount of students going to our vocational technical school, but we had the highest representation because our market value was so high. And so it's, it is not just here. It is, it is a statewide driven formula for, for that. Yeah. So it's something you may have to take. I know these, they, they will work on it, but it's something you, you would have to probably take to a higher
And I will.
Authority. So
So were there any more questions for them?
I don't, I have a question. I didn't have one. You said they have to take to a higher authority?
The legislature or wherever these Articles of Agreement, they, they come down, they, they've been down, the Articles of Agreement in Chester County, I know, were done in the sixties. And, you know, I'm sure that's the same way up here. But they were dictated to the portions of the state and how they do that based on, on that. And I could not be a hundred percent right on that, but, but they, they I know, I know, we're talking about board seats. You know, you get three board seats. You know, maybe, I don't know who's richer, East, East Penn or Parkland. Parkland gets six seats, but you have twice as many kids as them.
Technically, the Area Vocational Technical School Board involves the boards of all of the sending school districts, which would be eight. Is it eight in number? Nine. So be the technically on the board of the Area Vocational Technical School Board, there'll be nine times eight or seventy-two board members that sit on that board. And state law allows and the Articles of Agreement provide that instead of having board meetings where seventy-two board members have to gather together to operate the vocational technical school, which is mandated under state law, that they operate through a joint operating committee where you have representatives reflective of the market value of the real estate of the sending school districts, which is what Mr. Linderman was talking about. So technically there is this entire board, which even though you sit here today, you're on the board, the Area Vocational Technical School Board of the vocational school. And we are required under state law to provide vocational technical school services. And when it was set up originally, we were set up part of the jointure, which resulted into the, in those Articles of Agreement. And it's not easy to get out of those arrangements. And once you are in the arrangement, you have to abide by the articles in terms of the formulaic issue. So it's not solely a higher authority. We would also, I believe the process involves if the higher authority is that the Pennsylvania Department of Education would have to get involved if we don't like the operation and want to pull out of the vocational technical school. So there is that higher authority, but it is a complex and a difficult procedure.
Well, how to basically, we had four seats and I took one away from them.
Pardon me?
We had four seats at one point. We didn't?
All.
Almost had four seats.
Almost had four seats, but then it was in the whole line of the structure. And the math that was involved in determining property values. And it turned out that it was incorrect. And so we went back and it was her name.
Right.
So that's something that I've revisited because that won't happen in, in the next year. Some things then happen. But I think that's something that we can revisit, but it is something, it was a document that was mentioned. It was right. It wasn't open that, not about the case, but there's a school.
That's the article in the agreement.
I remember I did, I gave, um, it's popular. But that's something that we could address at a later date. Thank you.
Sounds like a great idea. Sounds like a great, great idea. So is there any more questions for any?
So I had a question. So the last time I was there, we kind of went over our ASD students and what programs they were in. Have those numbers changed? What are we doing to diversify it? Because from what I remember, most of our students were in cosmetology and nursing. There was no, there wasn't any ASD students from, I remember in technology. There were barely any ASD students in any of the other programs, except maybe automotive. And that speaks to me because it's, I felt like we're being pigeonholed by our environment and not being given any different alternative. So what are we doing to diversify that? Because I'd love for, I don't know, my electrician to be from ASD. I'd love for someone else to be from ASD other than cosmetology and nursing.
Thank you for that question. One thing that we implemented last year was to have a fifth grade tour. And we brought approximately thirty-two hundred students, I, I don't know the exact number, from all the school districts in the county. And we, we focused on the fifth grade because that's a pivotal year for determining what type of math you're going to select moving forward into, into the middle school grades. And it, that decision often makes a determination of what types of programs or what types of career pathways students choose. So we wanted to address that group of students and expose them to careers at an earlier age. I don't know until that fifth, that last year's fifth grade, this year's sixth grade comes through and they become eighth and ninth graders and they're choosing programs if that program has effectively made a change. We're, we're measuring metrics related to that, related to that open house, that tour experience. We're also working with the counselors on, on, communicating, on, working with students on career pathways, helping them to understand opportunities. We're working with our teachers to have more programming where they can share what the career pathway holds so that we can diversify students in those, in those programs.
Okay. Is there any way that we can get, and you might not be able to, but some kind of commitment towards we will not have ninety percent of our students in just these two programs? Because for me, that's a fail on our students. We need them to be looking into these other programs because at the end of the day, you can make a lot of money doing other things. And a lot of times they, they come out of these programs and they don't do that because there's so many of our students in these programs. So I feel like if they're just jumping towards that, we need to get them to jump towards something else. Is there some kind of commitment, something that we can do to make sure we are filling everything across the board instead of just filling these? Because as Ms. Phoebe said, thirty cents of every dollar is going towards you guys. But we're just filling one program and we're not even taking advantage of thirty percent of the programs. So what are we doing to average that out?
That's, that's a great question. And all I can say is I would love to make that commitment. We do work with placing students in their career choices. So part of that is effective counseling that happens prior to them coming to us and while they are with us to be making those appropriate choices. We have changed some of our enrollment processes. You heard me talking about the enrollment process, the application process being open and our priority deadline being March thirty-first. We are looking at that data at that point and trying to understand those students who apply in that time period, what programs are they, are they requesting and what does that look like? So we can disaggregate that data and I'll be able to share that with you a little bit and maybe we can dig more deeply into that. We are, we are developing teams to look at that enrollment process because we know we, we need to do a better job with that as well.
Do we have the percent of students that receive their first choice from ASD?
We do have that. First choice placement was fifty-eight percent. And seventy percent of students were placed in one of their top three choices. Okay. Seventy, seventy percent, yes, top three choices and seventy-five percent in one of their top six choices. I'm sorry. Oh, that was their number one choice. Their number one request.
Do you have that for the other districts as well as a comparison?
I do not have that with me, but I can get that.
So we have the highest total of students, but they're only getting fifty-eight percent of their first choice. Go ahead, go ahead.
You talked about, I talked to you before. You talked about what that process, that process looks like for our students to enroll in. Yeah. So what I remember, there was, we have, we had a decrease in enrollment. The other part was, then you talked about students had to do a dance, say your family?
That's correct.
And then I heard you, I think today, and you helped me understand it, like about, I'm not thirty-two. You said something about math. Is that math on your end or math on our?
On your end, at the fifth grade level. I'm sorry.
I think you have to perform a certain, it's just a fifth grade, so that's a fifth grade. And then you said something about math.
So, so what I said was that we, we developed a fifth grade tour so that Okay. We developed that tour because we know that fifth grade is a pivotal turning point for students to, to choose their math moving forward. And many of our higher level programs do require high, higher level math courses. So electromechanical, HVAC, those types of programs require higher level algebra two. Our precision machining program, there's a lot of trigonometry that's involved with that program. So we do provide supports for students. If they're interested in those programs, we help them and support them with their learning. But it does help them if they have those strong math skills.
Now, you asked me something, but not all of it. Um, let me, for me, if he has that, but I, for him the goal to get to this grade was to score back enrollment was up in conference. More like a, have a score that they can know what else, else, um, LCTI provided. I don't remember having a conversation about that much. So, because if you have, and, and you, and I'm sure everybody knows that Allentown has written that, right? So I don't even know why. Why we would compete commercially for LCTI? If there's going to be barriers that's going to prevent us from getting into hot quality.
Oh, it doesn't prevent in any way. It does not prevent.
Well, if we have that, it's electrical, electrical, and you're those areas.
Mm-hmm.
Besides cosmology. And.
Mm-hmm.
That's still to me. That's me thought. To me, it seems like it's created. And putting us in those, those things, I mean, I could say things. Of classes. Because before. There was a problem where I couldn't pay N K because they had twenty-five dollars for my smart. So it was always something and then we, you know. So we definitely. As education chairs, I mean, I'm going to be, I'm going to come, I'm going to. That's something. But we have to do better because again, our kids. Are missing out and, and, and then here's what it is in me coming in. I have a lot of respect.
Thank you.
I resent the fact. That you ask me for our money. But when our kids get given. They don't get what it is they come to. I said that from them. And to speak to. The demographics. I came to Pennsylvania to dial in the pen. I was the only Latin boy for L C P I. When I got on the board, nobody in L C P I knew I was. So there is some concern. We have to get past it. So we'll begin the conversation and better. But again, first it was, listen to what I'm saying. First it was. The kids have the right in order to get into what they want. And now with the math.
So let me clarify, please. So we know that effective communication skills, effective math skills are important, important for the majority of our careers today. And so we provide extensive professional development for our teachers. To actually support their instructional practices to teach that content as it relates to the trade. We have them relate it to the content in the math classroom. We try to connect the math terminology with the work terminology so that they can understand that the formulas that they're using in math class. Are the same formulas that they're using in their CTE class. But we provide extensive professional development. For our teachers and we work on strategies to embed literacy and that includes math literacy every day in our curriculum. We know that the majority of, majority of our students, not just from your district, but the majority of our students come in with academics. That are not where they need to be. And the reality is that we need to help to buttress that learning. And to scaffold that so that we can get them closer to where they need to be each and every year that we're with them. Academics is a big focus on what we do. We call it integrated academics. Because we're, we're really focused on that career pathway for students and helping them to get to that next, next step. I would love to see more students in every one of our programs and I will commit to working with you all on that process. We are currently looking at our enrollment process and looking at different cut points. In our process so that we can look at where is the issue happening? Do we see the, the early students who apply? Are they getting their first choices? Or is it the students that apply later in the summer or maybe in the fall? Which of those, which of those groups of students are not getting their top choice of a program? That fifty-eight percent number that I talked about reflects all of the students that applied last year for this current school year. Regardless of when that application was received. So we have to kind of establish some bench, benchmarks so that we can look at that data more closely.
Okay, so now I'm trying to understand this because now you're saying that, oh, sorry, I'm sorry.
Mm-hmm.
I need a, just out of educate, I'm going to be quiet. But we had talked about. If we are in a L C P I where our kids. They have talent. They have math and talent.
Go ahead, Miss Phoebe.
Okay, okay, so you were talking about fifth grade and then you were saying that those things need to be, the math needs to be before that. Well, you have an academic center. These children are coming in at ninth grade, those who want to come in at ninth grade. So they're, were they not testing, being able to test into that? Or are they testing out? How do you know they don't have the math skills? And the fact, okay, and then hold on, but then you have an academic center there that we're paying for. So to me, I'm thinking if that's the problem. We can keep our kids at home for half a day and just send to y'all just in half a day. Keep our kids academically at home and just send y'all, you know, send them over there for the trade part, the technical part. Yeah, but the, the, right, but some of them do go for that, but if, if, if it's a problem for, for the, everybody. And it's only, you know, it, it, it's, it's a problem that, you know, you see the math and whatever and test the technical things that are not. Helping our children get what they want. We can keep them home for that part.
I'm not implying that it was for everyone.
Okay.
I, I, many people, many, many people dislike math. And they're, they have a fear of math, right? Many people do, thank you. Um. I loved math when I was in high school. I, I have a fear of it now because I don't remember how to do any of that math I learned in high school, right? So we try to support students where they are and help them to move forward for their next step. That's our goal. And get them ready for their career.
Ms. Nancy?
I still carry the one, so um, with my finger, I still carry the one, but um, I just wanna, I. I wanna make sure I heard what you were saying um, when you were talking about the fifth grade tour and the math.
Mm-hmm.
A lot of the, the, the programming up at L C T I has specific math requirements to get into that programming, so I. Am I hearing what, I think what I heard was. You're bringing them up there so that they know, so that they can build the foundational math in their home district from sixth through ninth grade. And have some of that, that foundational skill set, so they're gonna be more successful. If they want to get into machining or carpentry or whatever it is that has, I mean. Carpentry takes algebra. I could never be a carpenter. I don't know how to do algebra. Um. So is that, is that what I was hearing?
Exactly correct, right? So it's more to expose them to the careers and what is involved and what will help them to be successful in that.
Thank you.
Any more questions?
Do we have any other questions? Um, so just so I'm clarifying, you're gonna give us the average of the students who do get their first choice.
I will.
Uh, for the other school districts. Um, and can we also know? How the, because we had this conversation, I believe, last year.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, has there been a change in the choices that our students have made between last year and this year?
So I believe the data you saw was from this year where students were placed.
Okay.
I believe.
I don't, did it say the change in there? I don't believe it.
I think you, I, I think we looked at an enrollment. Chart.
That was, that was last year's.
Last year's?
It was, so I went last year, so it was two years ago.
Okay.
So, yeah, a, a new one that would show like if there's a difference between how many students enrolled in each particular program from ASD.
We can pull that together. Just give me a little bit of time.
Okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, you can continue, Mr. Linderman.
Okay, you're, you're up.
Oh, that was everything?
These three need to.
Okay, so they have a motion to move agenda items four point two, four point three and four point four. Uh, forward to the regular board meeting on Thursday, February twenty-third, twenty twenty-three.
So move.
Thank you. Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any oppose? Okay, moves forward. Um, next will be uh, exhibit four point five, uh, Mr. Linderman.
Um, well, continuing on the budget.
Oh, okay.
Guys are welcome to stay because it's gonna be riveting. I. I, I still can't get past Mr. Sultanic's statement that there could be a school board with seventy-two on it. Just. No offense.
Untaken.
Uh, but thanks for your patience with the three schools. We're trying to uh, get, get them in and really. In the realm of our whole budget, that's about two percent of your budget, the, the whole thing. Tonight, we're gonna give you, and I've been told by everybody that is not sitting up there, this better be quick. A, a really quick overview of the, of the budget and the changes, so. We, we did make some adjustments to revenue. I'll, I'll kind of fly through, through them. Um. A little delay. Maybe, I'll just keep. Okay, there you go. So this, this pie basically shows that most of your revenue does come from the state as no, no big surprise. In, in local sources, I'll go over individually really quick. We, we made some adjustments here a little bit. Um, uh, you know, Mr. Fazi and I have been looking where we can to maximize and. And do some, some things differently in the business office. We're able to, to better maximize some of your investment revenue, so we're able to. Increase that budget by close to a million dollars. Uh. State sources, we uh. Moved the basic ed funding after talking to a few people from the state, uh, moved it up to what we really got for this year. Uh, as I said earlier, the governor will be releasing his budget on March first. Normally it's done February first, but when a new governor comes in, they get an extra month. So after uh, March first, we'll have a better idea on what. What he is um, proposing that, as you know, that doesn't mean that's what you'll get. Sometimes it's better, most times it's worse. Federal sources, we have not changed in there and we still have not included the ESER money. And then this is just a multi-year um, look at the um, revenues. And then yellow was the highlighted what our totals were. Uh, this is our first kind of look at the expenditures overall and it's a real, real high level. Um, you know, we, we, we're drilling down as Dr. Burke said, we've been meeting with all the, all the building principals and we're gonna meet with all the departments. Uh, talking about their budget, we gathering and uh, getting all the staffing together so that they can, they can uh. Work that out. These are our cost drivers. It's a pie chart here. It's got a lot of pieces of the pie, but four main pieces I'll, I'll um. Highlight salaries, benefits, that's sixty-three percent of your budget. Charter schools are sixteen percent of your budget. Uh. And then a very distant fourth is, is actually debt. That sounds. Uh, like it should be higher, but it's five percent of your budget. Uh, the big cost drivers in the budget uh, are salaries and benefits and we. We, we've actually budgeted about a two percent overall increase in salaries, um. Effective salaries uh, and a six percent increase in, in all benefits and that act six percent is actually that low be. Because we included there was a decrease in your pension contribution per next year. If you recall back in December, the. The Pennsylvania School Employees Retirement uh, System voted, Board voted to reduce the. Contribution from the boards from thirty-five point two six percent this year to thirty-four percent of which you. Uh, you do get reimbursed a, a pretty big chunk of it uh, because of your uh. Aid ratio. Um. This next slide is just kind of side by side, the revenues and expenses. We have not. Put any number on millage because with, again, we, we are not done this yet. We um. Uh, have not put any ESER revenue in there, so right now you're about four million dollars um. In a deficit, which in, in a four hundred million dollar budget is like less than one percent or around one percent. Um, real quick, and we're gonna do a little more on this uh, next month is, it's your fund balance. Um, we don't have twenty twenty-two because the, the, our annual financial report and our audit is not completed yet. But you see in twenty twenty-one, you did increase a little bit. I will however warn you just real quick that. That that number is, is your total fund balance and as you go back prior years, your fund balance in prior years. Historically is to be adjusted for commitments and restricted monies and things like that. Certain things like legal agreements and long-term liabilities. Uh, you have certain what we call OPEB, which is other post-employment benefits that you. You know, that if the school district ceased operations today, you would have to pay certain people. Out uh, for whatever sick leave, whatever it, you have in your, your contracts. Those are normally restrictions to your fund balance, which would bring your unassigned fund balance, which is truly. What we call your, what we'll call your fund balance that is usable for. For uh. You know, whatever you would decide um. Uh, down to it would bring it down and fourteen million dollars sounds big. And if you were, if I was in Great Valley, I would be ecstatic because our budget was only a hundred and twenty million dollars. A four hundred million dollar budget, the recommendation from the uh, credit rating agencies is it's about eight percent of your budget. So you should really have about a thirty-two million dollar fund balance. Uh, more on that later. Uh, the next thing is a slide we showed last month. It's just the side by side, uh, or the. Millage versus your act one index versus your social security index. Uh, again, yeah, I said this already, so I'm not gonna say it. Too quick. Next month we'll come back with a, a few more uh. Little more, more drilled down on your expenditures, a little more drilled down on your revenues and a little more, and we'll have the first. Um. Estimate at a proposed um. Millage for, for next year. So with that, I'll stop on budget. I'm, I, the, the presentation continues with the other things we have there, so. I know that was quick.
Thank you.
But again. Our goal is to, is to, is to kind of have you look at things many, many times. And then uh. Well. That's that. So first item we have on for discussion is actually a, just a discussion only item. As you, you know, uh, Mr. Fazi and I are looking for kind of better ways for you to do things. You do have a, a credit card system in the school district. We're investigating changing that current system from a, from a, to a, a, a more proc, more procurement card type system instead of credit card system. Uh, and the credit card or the procurement card system actually. Uh, with this, the one that we are proposing is called Easy Procure. It was developed by the. Um, Pennsylvania School Boards Association, the Pennsylvania Association of School Administrators, that's the Superintendent's Association. And um, uh, the Pennsylvania Association of School Business Officials, so they. Kind of designed it, developed it, created better internal controls, better audit trails. Um, um, we, one of the things we noted here, you guys still have petty cash. There's not a lot of places that still have petty cash. Not a good thing. Not a big thing, but it's not a good thing. You know, petty cash. Uh, procurement card could easily replace that. The, this, this credit card system enables you to restrict people to dollar amounts per month. So you could say this is no more than a hundred dollars a month. It, you could say you can only purchase things if, if we were to give one to maintenance. It can only purchase things that. At uh, kind of home improvement stores like Home Depot or Granger or one of those places that, that uh. Mr. Smith and his crew go to. Uh, it streamlines the purchasing process plus this system when uh, when the, the uh, I call them the P groups there. Uh, they um. When they developed it, they actually generate kind of like a rebate on this and the more schools that are in it. The more you have a chance to get in a rebate. Uh, so Mr. Fazi and I, when we participated in this at Downey Town Great Valley, we were getting. Seventy-five to a hundred thousand dollars back in, in. I don't know if you have like Discover, Capital One, it's kind of like that, but, but it's on a, on a much higher level. And again. I can't emphasize enough how, how much better the internal controls are if you suspect anybody of fraudulent stuff. If they do it with their credit card, you got every piece of documentation you need to do whatever you want to do to them. Well, within whatever Mr. Sultanic would say, so um. We will be back with a little more on that. We just wanted to kind of. Throw that in your face tonight and uh, so you're not like looking at us next month saying, geez, where'd that come from? So. This next thing is something we are looking for um, um, a little bit of, for a uh, move forward at, at two weeks from now's agenda. It's, it's the bringing on of uh, uh, Valbridge Property Advisors. To, to identify properties that may be under assessed. Uh, for a possible tax appeal on your part. You already do this. Kind of limitedly, a, a, limited right now. Uh, but this is, this. Enables you to make the process more objective, so you're not just having. You know, me or whoever your business administrator is, look at um. Stuff from the recorder at deeds office, so your house sold. And it, it's actually worth more than it is assessed at. We're gonna appeal you. And I don't mean that, there, it's not a lot of houses that are gonna be appealed on this. Yeah, we, we need to comply with your board policy. You have a board policy six twenty-seven. It is up to date. It's almost exactly the same as, as, as what Mr. Fazi and I are used to. So what, what it currently does is it, it will identify properties that are under assessed and what I'll say, not paying their fair share of taxes. Most of these will be commercial type properties. Um, Valbridge has a, a system, an analytic system that they will analyze your tax duplicate. Look at it and spit out a, a uh, a, a list of, of properties that here's who you might, you, you need to think about. Um. Appealing because sure as shooting, if they are over assessed, they're already appealing. Appealing cuz sure as shooting, if they are over assessed, they're already appealing it to the county themselves. So this is just kinda making it, if it's good for the goose, it should be good for the gander, and we, we should be able to do that. And if you got some senior citizens living down, down the street from you, paying whatever they're paying, but you got a company that. Maybe is uh, uh, on the books at a million dollars, but it's worth five million dollars. Well, they need to pay their fair share, so it, it's gonna enable us to uh, the school district to possibly lower the tax liability to property owners. And ensure a fair and equitable tax assessment. Um, and um, so. These people charge forty-five hundred dollars to do this. I, I know that uh, in, in the past, where we come from, you will generate that much more. You, you in uh, in uh. Additional assessments. Uh, by doing this, we, we implemented a system like this, or Mr. Fazio and I already had this system, and we implemented a system like this that. At Coatsville, and they found uh, in the first year about two and a half million dollars in undervalued properties. That uh, mostly corporate that were, that needed to, to come on the books, so. Uh, they would identify properties between March and May. A list would be compiled. We would bring that list back to you. You actually have to approve the list of. Properties that we, that we would uh, appeal the taxes. Mr. Sultanic's office um, represents us on that half. Uh, and then when, when we, we would appeal the properties, um. And that goes through the process, and uh, like I said, we already do this somewhat. This, this makes it a little more objective. And it also will create what, what we think you'll capture more of the people who are egregiously. Under assessed. The threshold in here, just so you don't have to worry about residential people getting nailed on this. Is you have to be paying ten thousand dollars less than you should be paying a year. So if you have a house that's assessed at. I don't know, a hundred thousand dollars, and what's our mileage here? I should know this. And it's probably interesting. Anyway, it would have to be, if you're paying two thousand dollars in taxes or three thousand dollars in taxes. We would have to say you, you really should be paying thirteen thousand dollars in taxes. Mainly, you're gonna see, most of these are gonna be in the first uh, couple of years, are gonna be companies that are paying. Several hundred thousand dollars in taxes that should be paying several hundred thousand more in taxes. So. Questions on that? I, 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 I'm sorry, I made that go too long. I promised everybody I was gonna be fast, as fast as I can talk.
So.
Forty-five hundred dollars. They take our tax duplicate, they analyze it, they spit out numbers. You, you know, we, you could see the list and say we're not. The, we're not appealing any. But once you approve the list, and it has to be done before August first, cuz um, uh, Mr. Comer and, in, in. Mr. Sultanic's office has to have it filed before Au- August first. I'm sorry, August first.
It's state deadline.
That's, yes, everywhere.
So everyone understands what he was uh.
Well, I, I can tell you, Mr. Fazio and I use this down where we came from. We use this in Cheltenham. They use it in, in Coatsville. I don't know around here who's, who's using them. I, I, I don't know. There's, there's a.
But it is important to use a firm like this in order to comply with a state Supreme Court. Precedent that our office was involved with, that argued before the Pennsylvania Supreme Court. That speaks to the basis upon which uh, school boards pick and choose which properties to go after. So that you have an independent methodology that is non-discriminatory. That you can pick and choose this to improve your revenue source.
Yeah, I recently testified for, on behalf of Coatsville in a court case. Uh, one of the people that they appealed in two thousand nineteen, when I was helping them out, took them all the way to court, and they won the court case. But. First question they ask is, why did you pick them? And my answer was, I didn't pick them. Valbridge selected the list. I worked with, at, at, we worked with a, a, a law firm in Westchester. Uh, Lamb McElane uh, represented us. The two of them were together. I did not pick them. Here, if you go to court based on your past practice. You couldn't answer it that way. So again, like Mr. Sultanic said, it's an independent, objective uh, evaluation.
I, period, by the way, I would seriously consider this as a revenue generator. You know, or a revenue equalizer for the district.
Yeah. Again, if you find two and a half million dollars from people who should be paying that much just to equal what you're paying, that's gonna make. The scale go like this, so you're gonna move them up to where they should be, and you should be able to equalize some people down. All things considered.
Are you, are you good, Miss Lee? Sorry? Oh, I, so. They have a motion to uh, move this forward. Ms. Phoebe, a second. This vote. Um, I believe that we did the discussion. Um, all in favor? Any opposed? So we have one opposed. So this is, I mean, we can go into it. Yeah, we can go into it, but it was explained.
I can make Mr. Fazier talk more, and he's not as funny as me two weeks. Thank you.
So the next item, the uh. Valbridge?
Yeah, I'm.
After, I'm sorry.
Paper bid.
It's late, I'm sorry.
This is Hilton Brandt, who's here in the audience. Did the paper supply bid? This is for our copy paper needs for next year. Three vendors responded. The best price was Liberty Paper, hundred eighty-seven thousand. This is a lot of paper. This ends up being. A little more than about three dollars and eighty-seven cents a ream, something like that, um. Which is a pretty good price. Go, go to Staples and see what you have to pay. Um, this locks in our price. We order it now. So we're sure to get ahead of the supply chain issues and have it in place for the summer.
Do we have any uh, a motion to move this forward? Ms. Will, uh, any second? Ms. Matheson, uh, any discussion? Hearing and seeing none. All in favor? Any oppose? Not hearing any, so this has been moved to the next board meeting on uh, February twenty-third.
Okay, the, the last thing that uh, I have is a, an, a procure, an electricity procurement authorizing resolution. Uh, the, the Allentown's been working with the Provident Energy Consulting. Uh, they represent. About a hundred and forty public education clients. Um, again, Mr. Fazian and I, you, you guys were already using these, these guys when we got here. But we use them down in our area too. They're gonna be shopping or, or uh, or bidding the electrical services. Uh, for Pennsylvania, they look for one, two, and three-year pricing for generation and uh, transmission portion of your bill. You, you still get your bill through PP and L, still comes in, but the, it'll change from where PP and L gets some of the stuff, depending on what happens. This authorization, the problem is this, this is one of those things where they do the, the bid tomorrow, and they gotta know by. The next day whether you're doing it, because the electric companies will only, they will lock, they need to lock in the prices um, right away, so. What we're requesting is a, an authorization that would give uh, either our executive director of facilities or. The business administrator or the superintendent, whoever is, is, is around the day we do this. To um, that, or they do this to enter into the electricity agreement. We'll give you a table. I can just about guarantee you. You're gonna be happy with whatever results they come. They've always been, been great, so uh. Uh, and, and every member of the group that, you know, has, has generally been happy, and it, it's gonna keep your electricity cost uh, in check.
Okay, uh, thank you for that. Um, do I have a motion to move the electricity procurement forward?
I'm making a motion. All second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
So, my question is. Is this like we have to deal with our personal. At home.
Yeah, you, you, it's like the phone calls you get.
Will we be, will we be getting a report? I mean, will it be included in some of the reports that we have, like the difference? This is one, two, three, your price.
Yes, yes, they give you, they give you a great report. They're gonna tell you, they're gonna give you a report by school. Yeah, 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 no, no, we intend to give it to you. Cuz it's, it'll be something we'll be happy about. And if it's not happy stuff, I'm gonna make Tom do it.
So you don't give them the reports for they're unhappy about?
Well, no, I make somebody else give them the report. Now, it'll be good. I, I can, I can, like, you know, Ivory Soap, ninety-nine, forty-four percent sure it's gonna be a happy report.
Thank you. Uh, any other questions? Okay, um, do I have a uh, can I vote to all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Alright, thank you. I, I, the last item, which I don't have included on the, on the slide here, I, is the um. Is what was, uh, Dr. Burke was talking about, the, the uh. Items, the laptops for the paraprofessionals, and we have it on the agenda, cuz it's a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, four hundred dollars, of which we're getting. Hundred and sixty thousand dollars from, from the um. Emergency connectivity fund. Did anybody else wanna talk about it, or is that? Enough? We're getting four hundred Lenovo laptops. That's for seventeen thousand dollars.
Um, so. Do I have a uh, motion to move this forward? Well, I gotta do that. Yeah, do I have a motion to move this forward? Thank you, Miss Will. Thank you, Ms. Harris. Now, uh, open for discussion. Uh, Ms. Brown?
So, are these the same laptops that our students receive?
Yes, you can have approach.
Good evening, board chair, board vice president, members of the board, acting superintendent is Burke. No, these are Windows devices.
Others to receive Chromebooks.
So why? Who is her Chromebooks?
I get that. I just wanna know why, what's the, like. Say that again. Do our teacher, do our teachers, I'm asking cuz I don't know. So do all our educators that have laptops have the same exact ones?
Our educators do have laptops. We bought them in with phase one of the funding. And we bought Hot Spice and the paraprofessionals. I don't know how they were left out, but they are an integral part of our instructional program.
No, I understand that part. I'm asking if they have the same type of laptops, the same.
There's, there's maybe newer.
Or do they have?
That, they may be six months newer, cuz you know, Windows, they update things so fast.
Okay, that's all, thank you.
Uh, Ms. Conover?
It's called the American Rescue Plan of twenty-one. It's the money that the federal gave the schools to help with learning loss.
And what else could you say? I'm not saying that we're not. What other things could you use that?
Um, we use seven, we use phase one of, it's about seven thousand devices for our uh. Teachers, and then we bought Hot Spice for our students, and we bought devices for our students, and. And we're actually in phase three right now. Of the funding.
So when you put the hot sauce.
That is when they gave us the money.
My other question is gonna come from where I was. Left off early. I need, I'm, I'm trying to get an understanding of. Power professionals and how the power professionals. Maybe my idea of, of, of a power professional.
Sure, um, these are instructional paraprofessionals that actually assist the teachers, you know, so we also have paraprofessionals. In the cafeteria and for security. These are for instruction. These are the ones that help the teachers monitor instruction. And sometimes, you know, when there is no teacher, is that staple in the classroom, that paraprofessional, like a teacher assistant. Exactly.
I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank, uh, anyone else on my board? Okay, thank you. Um, so all in favor of moving this towards the next meeting on Thursday, February twenty-third?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Let's move forward favorably. At this time, uh, that is everything, so would there be a, are there any public comment cards? Okay, so do I have a motion to end this meeting? Okay, a second?
A third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
That was the longest uh, past report I have ever attended in my life.